All right, let's call our meeting in order. Madam Clerk, can we do the roll call?
Councilmember Brand. Councilmember Brandau. Councilmember Capriolio. Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Quintero. Councilmember Soria. Councilmember Baines.
Here. All right, now we'll have our invocation led by Pastor Kevin Foster of the Life Bridge Community Church. And if we could all stand and remain standing, immediately following, we will salute the
Lord, we just thank you so much that we can rely upon you. You can give us hope and you can give us strength. Thank you that in your word, you tell us that if anybody lacks wisdom, we can ask of you and you will liberally give it to us. And so today, we pray for that wisdom. Lord, there's times when our intellect, when our knowledge, where our wisdom comes to an end, and it's in those moments that we rely upon your wisdom, your strength, and your power. And we pray that you would grant that to us today, Lord. Our city is dealing with very complex issues. And sometimes, Lord, we don't know what to do. But in those moments, help us to know that we can rely upon you, we can rely upon your strength, and you will give us the wisdom if we ask of it. We thank you so much for that. In your mighty name, we pray. Amen.
Face the flag. Ready, salute. All right, we have a few ceremonial presentations this morning. First up, we will have proclamation of Arts and Humanities Month by Councilmember Soria.
Good morning. So today, we are recognizing the month of October as the National Arts and Humanities Month. As a strong supporter of the arts, I am so happy to have a number of folks from the community that are great advocates of the arts, that have worked tirelessly to ensure that the arts in our community continue to flourish and are a great part of our economy. So I want to thank this morning, Lilia Chavez, Nancy Marquez, Helen Ralgins, and also Frank Delgado from Artes Americas for being here this morning. I do just want to say a couple things. It is very important to recognize the arts in our community, arts and culture, because they do play an integral part of our community and our economy. We know that throughout Fresno, we have Art Hop and we have a series of arts and cultural events that really provide great opportunities for not only our young people, but all of us to enjoy what is happening in our community. So here in Fresno, we have a wealth of arts and humanities organizations that really enrich the lives of people in our community and throughout the Central Valley. So there are great organizations in our community. Our arts community also sponsors many local art programs that we can all look forward to having throughout the year. For example, there's the Art Hop. I know that Artes Americas have every month on Fridays, they have great events happening where they have live entertainment, and also they bring great artists to their Artes Americas. So I want to thank them for all that they do. I also want to thank the Valley Cultural Coalition and the Fresno Arts Council for being here today. I know that you guys work every day tirelessly. I've attended many of your guys' events, and so I want to thank you guys for being strong advocates, for coming and asking the Art Council to invest, because I do believe that it's important that we look and so I look forward to working with you guys so that we look for opportunities to continue investing in our arts community. So I will pass on the mic to Frank for a few words.
My name is Frank Delgado. I'm the Director of Arte Americas here representing the Valley Cultural Coalition. It is an organization that consists of various organizations from throughout the valley, represent everyone from PBS to the Visalia Opera Company and various, every sort of art organization in between. And it is very, very, it's an honor that the city recognizes the importance of arts in this community, has been a huge supporter, and we are very, very thankful for this opportunity. I'd like to also turn this over to Lilia Chavez, who's the Director of the Fresno Arts Council, and really the champion of so many things that happen here, and the visibility in the arts in this city and in this community.
It's important to note that what you're doing today by this resolution is not only happening in Fresno, but throughout the nation. Throughout the nation, October is proclaimed as Arts and Humanities Month. And so it's very important for us as a community to take a time out, visit an art museum, go to a concert, drop in in a gallery. Fresno, Fresno County, and the Central Valley have a huge array of resources in the arts. We don't have enough, but we work hard, and we therefore have some of the very finest opportunities in the art. Our local art museum, both Arte Americas and the Fresno Art Museum, provides you with many opportunities to see things that you wouldn't see anywhere else. So I thank Councilmember Soria and all of the members of the council and our city as a whole for all you do to support the arts in Fresno. Thank you.
Thank you, Lilia. And I just want to add, I know that there was a segment earlier this week on KQED that highlighted some of the interesting things that are happening here in Fresno, especially with the arts community and the opportunities that Fresno actually provides for artists, because it is actually much more affordable to have a studio here. And so there's artists that are coming from bigger cities to come and work out of places like Fresno. So I think it's exciting, and I am very happy to be a strong supporter and to have you guys here today to proclaim again the month of October, Arts and Humanities Month. So on behalf of our council and our administration, the mayor, we want to present this proclamation. If you could please read it for the record. Thank you.
Whereas, across our nation, we celebrate Arts and Humanities Month each October to acknowledge the importance of arts and culture in our lives. And whereas, Fresno has a wealth of arts and humanities organizations that enrich the lives of the people in our city and throughout the Central Valley. And whereas, the economic impact of the nonprofit arts and humanities industry in Fresno County generates $119.7 million in local economic activity. And whereas, our leading arts organizations have come together to call attention to the many offerings we have throughout October and into the fall season to experience the arts in our institutions, in our centers and public places, in our churches and homes, and in our schools. And whereas, we join with the Valley Cultural Coalition, Arte Americas, Fresno Arts Council, Madera County Arts Council, Arts Consortium Visalia, Cultural Arts Rotary Club of Fresno, Fresno Chamber of Commerce, and Valley PBS in celebrating the arts and call on citizens to support the arts. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fresno does recognize the many contributions of our local arts organizations and does hereby proclaim October 2015 to be Arts and
All right, next up, we're going to have a present, we're going to have a proclamation on the National Day of Writing, and I will come down and present that. So I give the distinct honor and pleasure of presenting our proclamation for the National Day of Writing. And it's interesting, because although we all take writing for granted, writing actually is a very big deal. The fact that we can do it, the fact that we use it in our human language as a form of communication is really, really important. And most of us, I know, and I'm going to say, me included, take the fact that we can write for granted. And so a couple of years ago, when I first had the opportunity to present this proclamation, I actually stopped and took a moment to pause and reflect on the fact that I, in fact, can write. And it's interesting, because I know that we don't think about that very often, but the fact that we have a San Joaquin Valley Writing Project, the fact that all throughout the nation, people are celebrating the fact that we can write in the written language today is relatively important. So I wanted to certainly give our guests an opportunity to talk a little bit about writing and the importance thereof.
Thank you, Councilmember Baines. In 1974, Mr. James Gray had a vision and a dream that all students throughout our country would become proficient writers. And my mom, who's a retired school principal, are here today to continue with his legacy. It is an honor and a pleasure for us to be a part of this proclamation. It is our hope and our dream that students throughout our country will develop a love and a passion for writing every day that they are in school. I'd like to thank all of you for your continued support for this very special day. May you have a wonderful day texting and writing, and God bless you.
All right, thank you. I don't know if all of my council, my colleagues up there can write. I'm looking at one, and I don't know, his writing may be, his writing may be a little suspect. See, there you go. No writing for him. He only talks. Well, with that, we're going to do the other, we're going to actually, interesting, we're going to now read the proclamation, which I think is the accompanying piece to writing. So Madam Clerk, if we can read the proclamation.
Whereas, the social nature of writing invites people in every walk of life, in every kind of work, and at every age and profession, to create meaning through composing. And whereas, the National Council of Teachers of English, in conjunction with its many national and local partners, including the San Joaquin Valley Writing Project, celebrates the importance of writing through the designation of a National Day on Writing, which occurs this year on October 20, 2015. And whereas, the National Day on Writing celebrates the foundational place of writing in America's personal, professional, and civic lives, and emphasizes the importance of writing instruction and practice at every grade level and in every subject area, from preschool through postgraduate education. And whereas, newly developing digital technologies expand the possibilities for composing in multiple media at a faster pace than ever before. The National Day on Writing honors the use of the full range of media for composing from traditional tools like print, audio, and video, to web 2.0 tools like blogs, wikis, and podcasts. And whereas, the San Joaquin Valley Writing Project encourages valley residents to write and to enjoy and to learn from the writings of others. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearengen, and the members of the Fresno City Council strongly affirm the purpose of the National Day on Writing, encourage participation in the National Gallery of Writing, and do hereby declare October 20, 2015 to be National Day on Writing in the City of Fresno.[771.44][771.44](Applause)
All right, I think next up, we have the, our service employee, quarter employee awards. And I think I'm just going to stay down here with Bruce while we do that.
Well, good morning. While the clerk's getting ready, first of all, who are, who's here today that is a family member of a recipient of this award today? Raise your hands. Well, thank you for coming, and more importantly, thank you for probably our times, the understanding that your spouse, your husband, brother, sister, wife, whatever the case may be, puts in extra hours or goes a little beyond the call of service. But that's why they're here today. But I also know that that sometimes impacts your plans for your family or other things that happen in life. And so, on behalf of our organization, thank you for sharing your loved one with us and allowing them to give back to our community a little bit more than is required of the job. How many of you now are employees who are here to support your coworkers? Raise your hand.[852.23][852.23](Applause) This event started about eight, 10 years ago, and it's become a tradition. And Thursday mornings, there's certain topics that come up on the agenda, this chamber fills up with a lot of people, and they don't look nearly as happy as you do right now.[869.44][869.44](Laughter) So I could tell you that we all appreciate starting our morning off by seeing a bunch of, what is it, bright shiny faces, we're all in our places kind of thing. But for all the employees that are here right now, I'm going to ask you to all give a big shout out of a thank you to your coworkers. Thank you for everything you do.[891.62][891.62](Applause) Clerk, if you want to say a few key words.
Well, anytime you give a politician a mic, I guess we can say something. But I want to, I certainly, as a member of the city council, certainly want to say thank you as well. Although we don't get to interact with you like the city manager and your colleagues and your department heads do, we very, very much appreciate the work that you all do. It's a big deal. It makes the city go. It's never lost on us. It may seem like it is sometimes, but it never is, and we greatly appreciate the work and sacrifice that you do to serve the residents of the City of Fresno. So thank you on behalf of the Fresno City Council.[932.62][932.62](Applause)
Okay, we'll get started. Have quite the full house, and there are more seats if you guys would like to have a seat. We're going to get started with the city attorney's office, and we're going to honor Michael Vasquez. Come on, Mike. Michael serves as the city's contract compliance coordinator and the city's Public Records Act Coordinator. He is responsible for managing a database that ensures compliance with city contracts and coordinates the city's responses to hundreds of PRAs submitted to city departments every year. Michael's desk is a fast-paced, deadline-driven, and involves managing thousands of documents. Despite the mountains of documents accumulating around him, Michael maintains a steady, unflappable persona. Michael's enthusiasm and his can-do attitude are contagious, making him the city attorney's office choice for Employee of the Quarter.
Hey, Parks, did you notice?
Next, we'd like to...
Wait, wait, wait. I got to look. Parks, did you notice?[1019.12][1019.12](Laughter) Attorney's office getting loud.[1021.66][1021.66](Applause)
You know you started something.
Absolutely.[1030.16][1030.16](Laughter)
Okay, now from the Durham Department, Ezekiel Valdevia.[1036.33][1036.33](Applause) Ezekiel has given the City of Fresno's Inspection Division over 10 years of outstanding service. He was nominated by his supervisor, as well as several of his coworkers. A few comments from the coworkers include, Ezekiel is a true public servant. He's always helping the public by going the extra mile to complete a project in a safe, timely manner. Ezekiel always has a smile on his face, and it's a pleasure to work with. He asks some great questions, and we all learn from the answers. Ezekiel provides each customer with a firm base of knowledge, professionalism, and politeness. He is always positive and brings his positive uplifting energy to both the office and the field. Ezekiel is definitely an asset to the City of Fresno. Congratulations, Ezekiel, and we thank you for giving all, your all, every day. Your devotion and diligence is being noticed and is very much appreciated. Now, from the Finance Department is Mark Reavis. I'm sorry, he won't be attending today, but I would like to tell you a little bit about what Mark does. Although he hasn't been with the Business Tax Department a very long time, he has brought with him experience that has helped this department move forward. He has knowledge of collections and tools needed to accomplish the department's goals, and he's been quite an asset. We wish he had come on board a few years ago. He would have helped get the slow-moving wheels a new motor.[1140.33][1140.33](Laughter) Okay, next is the Fire Department. And we'd like to start out with Robert Feierstein.[1150.58][1150.58](Applause) Robert has been with the Fresno Fire Department for eight years. He began his fire career with the North Central Fire Protection District and is actively involved in a variety of areas, most notably the Patriot Guard and the Honor Guard, of which he has been a member for several years. These assignments often require him to dedicate much of his off-duty time, participating in events that honor the lives and service of others. He was instrumental in assisting with the memorial service for former Fresno firefighter Daniel Corrigan this past spring. Bob quietly and honorably does his job without complaint. Bob has a positive attitude that exemplifies the heart of a firefighter, selfless, hardworking, and dedicated. Also, from the Fire Department is Alex Liliashiani. Alex has been a member of the Fire Department for over 10 years. He has been an outstanding firefighter since the day he arrived, and the department has benefited greatly from his education, trade skills, and experience. Alex's diligent work ethic and natural ability to motivate others is infectious. He makes difficult tasks seem easier with his positive demeanor and his lightheartedness. Alex was promoted to the position of engineer within four years of joining the department. He continually challenges and enhances his abilities by joining a variety of teams and committees, and is also active in assisting the department's Training Division. Alex encompasses the core values of the Fire Department, and he has definitely left it better than he found it. Next, from the Information Services Division, we'd like to recognize Sanjay Patterson.[1284.25][1284.25](Applause) ISD is pleased to announce Sanjay, Database Administrator, is their Employee of the Fall Quarter 2015. Within these past several months, Sanjay has personally met with and trained dozens of staff from almost every department in the use of the new Fresno app and the powerful Public Stuff Pro software. Behind the scenes as well, Sanjay has spearheaded the upfront work with the vendor to get all the complex preparations done. Sanjay has been responsive, helpful, and thoroughly engaged in making this rollout, maintain momentum, and be the best it can be. Successes are already abundant, many thanks to Sanjay's tireless efforts and the work departments have done to improve their workflow process. Congratulations, and thank you.[1342.42][1342.42](Applause) Okay, here comes the Parks Department.[1352.42][1352.42](Cheering) And we would like to start out with Ashley Obeso.[1360.25][1360.25](Cheering) Ashley was promoted to a permanent Community Recreation Assistance in the Parks Department this year. She has worked for Parks since 2005 as a temporary employee in various positions. She staffs the front desk at the Ted C. Willis Community Center, providing excellent customer service while assisting the public throughout the year with hundreds of facility reservations and participant registrations. Ashley also assists with preparing marketing material for the department, as well as preparation and planning for programs like Kids Fest, BMX Events, and the Christmas Parade, summer camps, and our sport program, Carnivals, and more. Ashley is creative, dedicated, organized, and dependable, and Parks is fortunate to have her on their team. We're going to move on to the Personnel Department.[1436.11][1436.11](Cheering) And we're going to recognize Kerry Gianetta. Kerry is a very calm professional who demonstrates tremendous patience and commitment. She shares her knowledge with others so they can learn and grow, while continuing to enhance her understanding of her role and assigned tasks to better serve her coworkers and customers. In the past year, she has been able to effectively reduce the number of long-term absences in several departments by facilitating the return to work of several employees in the regularly assigned classifications, identifying alternate work, or facilitating the medical separation process in some instances. Kerry provides a great example of what it means to be a dedicated city employee of more than 17 years. We are proud and fortunate that she is a member of the Personnel Team. Okay, we're moving on to the Police Department.[1504.75][1504.75](Cheering)
All right, wait, wait, wait. Obviously, the Police Department needs a little help, so let's hear it again.[1514.01][1514.01](Cheering)
Yvonne Selick is the first employee we wanted to recognize, but she's not able to attend today, so I'll read just a bit about what she does. Yvonne is the Employee of the Quarter nominee from the Communications Bureau. She is a reliable employee and has an easygoing disposition, remains calm in emergency situations, which is a must for 911 calls, and is a genuine friend to her coworker and friends. Yvonne can handle emergency calls and traffic. She's the type of person you would want on your side when times are bad and you need help. So congratulations to Yvonne.[1552.01][1552.01](Applause) Also, in the Police Department, we'd like to recognize Steve Taylor.[1560.63][1560.63](Cheering) Officer Taylor has been a member of the Homeless Task since its inception in August 2013. He has served as team leader numerous times, attending meetings to collaborate with service providers, and has been in charge of the Task Force Shopping Carts effort. Since the beginning of this operation, Steve has overseen a total of 4,500 carts that have been confiscated due to arrests or the team's cleanup efforts. Steve met a gentleman who was recently released from prison and needed assistance. This man was finding it difficulty to navigate the various systems to find housing. Steve took it upon himself to help this gentleman and personally spoke with his case manager about potential places and getting into a program. Steve went as far as to ride him a ride home from church on Wednesday nights so that he could, so that his spiritual needs could also be met. Officer Taylor is an example of what it means to serve the community you live in, and it doesn't let his work hours dictate his heart for the needing. He is truly one of Fresno's finest. Next, in the Police Department, is Dominique Comani. Did I say that right? Officer Dominique Comani has long been a dependable employee who is always willing to help the public or fellow employees in the way she can. She is quick to volunteer for unassigned work and does so happily. She makes every effort to serve the public to the best of her ability. Recently, she arrived at a loud party complaint when she heard several gunshots nearby. She observed a vehicle take off at a high rate of speed, and she decided to conduct a traffic stop to determine if the occupants were involved. She contacted the three occupants without incident. Two of them were later positively identified as having done the shooting. Officer Comani's swift and decisive actions resulted in the apprehension of two extremely dangerous suspects, making our community safer in the process. Her performance in this incident indicates how she performs on a regular basis. And the last member of the Police Department we'd like to recognize today is John Mendez.[1739.53][1739.53](Cheering) Since becoming a detective in 2014, John has made numerous arrests of wanted gang members, probationers, and parolees while recovering thousands of dollars in stolen property. One particular case highlighting his skills as an investigator involved his arrest of a suspect who had been burglizing schools throughout the southeast Fresno. The suspect in this case confidently walked into the campus during school hours pretending to be a janitor. It was then that the suspect would enter an unoccupied classroom and steal thousands of dollars of laptop computers. As a result of John's investigation, the suspect was identified and arrested. A search of the suspect home led to recovery of evidence in five school burglaries. His work has undoubtedly led to the removal of dangerous criminals from our streets and making Fresno a safer place. and making Fresno a safer place to live, so congratulations. Okay, moving on to the Public Utilities Department, we'd like to recognize Samuel Bersegia. Capable of being depended on, worthy of trust, reliable and loyal, these are words commonly used to describe this employee. Samuel is someone who is committed to his job no matter what he's asked to do. Whether he's raking debris while working with Operation Cleanup, building towders for our new homes, or washing dirty ones with the containers maintenance crew, he strives to perform above and beyond his position to make the city of Fresno a better place. He has been described by his coworkers as a hard worker, a great guy, and a pleasure to work with. He works well with his supervisors and can always be counted on to get the job done with always providing excellent customer service, so congratulations. Also in Public Utilities, Kimberly Schneider. Since joining the team, Kimberly has made major strides in getting the division's safety program back on track. Some of her accomplishments related to bringing the safety program back up to speed include organizing all-employee paper and electric training files and prioritizing the training needs for the staff. Kimberly has secured and provided fire extinguisher training for 108 employees, bloodborne pathothon training, and certification for 48 employees in forklift and aerial lift operations and safety. Kimberly has had the opportunity to participate in the county CUPA inspection of the water exclamation facility. Even with all of this, Kimberly found the time to become a certified first aid CPR/IED instructor. Congratulations. Now we'd like to recognize Isador Flores, Public Utilities. Isador's crew is the first to leave the water yard every day. He's prepared with his service order and material ready to go. He rarely has a need to work overtime and his jobs usually get done in one day. Isador is a reliable operator who shows up early and can be counted on to do any type of job. Isador's specialty is maintaining large meters. His history and knowledge is hard to beat. Each type of large meter operates differently, and he can operate each type without issue. Other operators go to Isador for his expertise and guidance when dealing with these matters. Isador has been a solid employee throughout his entire 26 years with water. Great job, Isador. Also from Public Utilities is Stephen Kelly. Stephen was nominated by several coworkers for his wonderful attitude and readiness to come to the aids of others, which he has done on many occasions. His attitude toward customers and coworkers is consistently calm, supportive, and accommodating no matter how stressful the situation. Stephen handles irate customers in a firm authoritative manner, saving coworkers the anxiety of these types of calls. He is extremely well-informed and is always willing to share his knowledge. He doesn't blame for mistakes, but instead, he's willing to help fix the issue and explain the problem so that it does not happen again. There is something innately calming about knowing there are people such as Stephen who are enthusiastic to help out and share their knowledge, so congratulations. And we're going to move on to Public Works next. And we're going to start with Jacqueline Hernandez. Jacqueline Hernandez. Jacqueline here? Jackie is an accounting technician in the administrative division of the Public Works Department. She processes a variety of federal and state reimbursement invoices. She does an excellent job in preparing the reimbursement invoicing for federal and state capital projects. Jackie is always looking for efficiencies in any of her assignments and is good at asking questions for clarification as needed. Jackie has been quick at picking up and completing single and dual-funded projects and completing the necessary invoicing steps to get the invoice ready for delivery. She works well with the rest of the accounting team and project managers that she interacts with throughout her invoicing process. It is this collaborative working relationship that is yielding an increased productivity in this area. This increased productivity has not gone unnoticed and has resulted in our department receiving revenue prior to the end of the year for expenditures incurred. Congratulations. Next in Public Works is Matthew Buller. Matt is typically assigned to the more complex and challenging city capital projects where he demonstrates his expertise, professionalism, and superior problem-solving skills. A notable project was the Howard Heights Water Main and Transfers where Matt, on a daily basis, met with and assured concerned residents regarding the modifications to their water services and plumbing connections. Currently, he is the inspector on the Herndon Whitening, Raleigh to Valentine. I know that familiarly, thank you very much. It's a $1.9 million project that has presented many challenges, all of which Matt has shepherded to resolution. Matt is well-respected by his peers and is thought of as a leader mentor by his fellow inspectors. Matt is an important and valuable employee to construction management. Congratulations. Next in Public Works is Anthony Villanueva. Anthony recently joined the street sweeping team. Over the last 18 months, the sweeper team has been impressed with Anthony's positive can-do attitude. Anthony is not concerned with who receives the credit, just that the sweeper team is successful. Anthony juggles the placement of 40 cube yard bins throughout Fresno while minimizing travel time for the street sweepers going to empty a bin. A collective thank you can be heard from the street sweeper operators. Congratulations. Next in Public Works is Richard Stoliker. Richard is a great example of an employee who serves the city of Fresno with excellence and pride. He can always be counted on at the job servicing the citizens of Fresno. His coworkers agree that he is an exceptional employee to work with, gets the job done every time, and shares his technical and professional expertise with all involved. He handles numerous projects and is always willing to step forward to take on additional responsibilities. In addition, Richard has been a valuable member of the Public Works team and has received several compliments due to his helpfulness and courtesy to the park and trail users. Richard is a great leader, teacher, and continues to go above and beyond to provide the citizens of Fresno with the best each and every day. Congratulations, Richard. Okay, we're going to move on over to the Transportation Department. And we're going to start out with Carlos DeRocque. Okay, Carlos has worked as a pair transit specialist for more than 10 years. He works hard to make substantial improvements to the service delivery to the community of people with disabilities. One example of his above and beyond customer service attitude is demonstrated when he assisted a disabled Greyhound passenger who had to make an emergency stop in Fresno for medical reasons. This passenger had no way to make connections necessary in Fresno, nor did she have the knowledge of the service needed to navigate it properly. Carlos personally took matters into his own hands and with outstanding creativity solved her issue. His helpfulness was so contagious that many employees pitched in with time, transportation, research, and all the support necessary for this passenger to truly feel like a guest in the city and have her unfortunate and unexpected needs met. Carlos goes above and beyond on a regular basis and always treats everyone with the highest level of respect. Great job, Carlos. Next in Transportation is Lynn Frankie. Lynn is the automotive parts lead worker with the Fleet Management Division. Lynn always goes the extra mile to be sure things get done in a timely manner and her work is correct and on time. If fleet supervisors want data or history from the parts room, they know Lynn is the person to go to. Not only does she have the information needed, she has the data to back it up. Lynn is a tremendous asset to the Fleet Management Division. Congratulations. Next in Transportation is Tracy McGee. On Wednesday, September 9, 2015, bus driver Tracy McGee had an elderly passenger who was a regular rider on her bus. Tracy noticed the rider was not talking clear, I'm sorry, and rode the entire trip, passing up his stop. She asked him why he passed up his regular stop, and he insisted he had not. Tracy's ability to connect with her regular passenger and being very observant called for a supervisor who was able to transport her elderly passenger to his home. Tracy is an outstanding employee. Congratulations. And finally, last but not least, is Dan Ruiz with the Transportation Division. Recently, Dan was tasked with running the air conditioning section during the swing shift of his lead worker and fellow AC mechanic have been on leave. When the buses come in with air conditioning problems, Dan works diligently to expedite the repairs to ensure air conditioning systems on the bus are in great operating condition for ridership. His efforts have significantly reduced downtime, maintenance costs, and have reduced overtime required to perform preventive maintenance and repairs. His ability to quickly diagnose and repair the AC system on the bus has minimized service disruptions. His efforts and hard work are greatly appreciated. Excellent job, Dan. Well, that's all we have for today, and this was quite a variety of good people doing good things in the city of Fresno. Very proud of you guys. Out in the foyer is refreshments for everyone. If you would like to go out there and have some, we appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Very excited to have had the opportunity to go learn from other jurisdictions who have been very successful in their projects, and so we look forward to making sure that we implement something great that will be beneficial for our community.
All right, those are all the council members I have punched up right now, so I'll make a couple of comments, and pretty brief myself, and really the only comments I wanted to have was following up with Councilmember Soria on our delegation to Madrid in Spain. And I can't underscore enough, and really this is not only for my colleagues, but really for the entire city of Fresno, that cares to listen to this, I can't underscore enough what my colleague just said about the importance of high-speed rail and to our city. I'm relatively certain now, as Councilmember Soria, I've been a longtime supporter of high-speed rail for a whole host of reasons, but this opportunity to go and talk to firsthand the operators, the builders of a system, the government entities that help operate and manage the system, the riders of the system, the users of the system, looking at the station as that house the high-speed rails, understanding the connectivity from not only a city-to-city standpoint, but an entire network for a country, was beyond impressive. And I'd like to really challenge the residents and my colleagues here who are not supporters of high-speed rail. Although I, you know, can't say that I can understand where all the opposition lies for right now, I know that there's still some that exists, but I think that we as a city, and the residents of this city, need to embrace the idea of the jobs that are going to come from this opportunity, because the opportunity that the city of Fresno has to place themselves in the center of high-speed rail for the entire country is very present, and we are right now flirting with the idea of passing that by, with really some actions that can be taken. It's been a great deal of work that has gone into positioning this, positioning Fresno to be a very big beneficiary in our economy from what this will bring. High-speed rail is going to happen, most of you see the construction work happening around our area right now. I think we should all, and not to use a train metaphor, but we should all get on board to what this opportunity presents for us here in Fresno. In a couple of weeks, my colleague and I are going to present a presentation to the council, and hopefully to those in the city that are watching, as to what those opportunities really look like. We both walked away with pretty concrete examples of what high-speed rail opportunities as far as jobs look like, right here in this city, for our residents. So I will be really challenging anyone, and really all of our residents, to understand if we care about our city and we care about our economy here, we need to be positioning ourselves to receive the full benefit that high-speed rail presents. And right now, we haven't quite done that, but we haven't packed, the window has not closed, we still have an opportunity, but the jobs present for us are very, very real, and it's a very big deal. And we're not talking about minimum wage jobs, these are, these are upper-middle income and high-wage jobs that will come to us in Fresno. And we are in very serious competition with other areas of this, of this state that are vying to take what we are positioning ourselves to have, and most of us don't understand that. There's a very serious competition going on for what we in Fresno should be able to position ourselves to have, but we have to close the gap. So I wanted to say that, I'm very, there's a, there's a lot of insight that was gleaned from, from this, from this trip, and as I said, in the coming weeks, you're going to hear a lot more about it from probably myself and Councilmember Soria for sure, but overall, we will be challenging this city to get ready for the jobs that high-speed rail is going to bring. So with that, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any changes to the agenda?
I have a couple of changes. Item 1F regarding street improvements to campus homesites neighborhood should be listed for District 5, not District 3, per Councilmember Quintero. And then, on a consent item 1N, there is a change that needs to be written to the record, but I want to make sure you guys know this change is there. On the staff report on page 2 or 3, under the bullets where it says "City Will," the second bullet, we need to scratch the words "not to exceed 7,100" at the end of that sentence. It shouldn't say that. Okay?
All right, Councilmember Brandow.
President, I'd like to pull item 1D for discussion.
Off the consent calendar.
All right, 1D. Yeah, we got it, right, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
Okay. Motion, the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 7-0. So I have you, Steve, I have that down for 1D.
Yes.
David, Councilmember Soria.
I'd like to pull item 1Q.
Right, items 1D and 1Q have been pulled for discussion. I will now take the consent calendar out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dice. Do we have a motion to approve the balance of this consent calendar?
I'll make the motion.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes 7-0. If we have staff here for item 1D.
Thanks, Manuel, I just needed to get a quick update on this one. I didn't make contact with you in time to get a private update, so I wouldn't, I'd like just to know a little information. The, this item's for an analysis for aquatics and design in the park system, is, so is that a particular location in the city of Fresno, or multiple? What is, what is going to be studied here? What's the analysis?
Councilmember Brandow, it's an analysis of, of all of our pools in the system right now. Many of our pools are extremely old, and we need to make some improvements, but until I get this actual analysis, I can't proceed with the upgrades and improvements that are sorely needed.
And so how many, how many pools are we really looking at?
We're going to be looking at all of the waiter pools, we're going to be looking at all of the learner pools, and we're going to be looking at all of our deep-water swimming pools. We have been called to task by the Fresno County Health Department, but again, I don't want to proceed until I have this analysis done, so I know specifically what areas we need to improve on.
Okay, okay, so, but, but, just, and I know you weren't probably expecting this, so right off the top of your head, we don't know how many pools, I mean, $92,000, to, I mean, we could, I wish we could have just applied that to fixing some of the pools, but I guess this is necessary.
So if I could add, the council, you allocated, I believe it was $400,000 towards the restoration of the pool at Frank H. Ball, so, and then we also have a pool at Airways that is actually an FAA asset. Nevertheless, both these pools were built probably in the '40s, if not longer ago. We have funding set aside to renovate both those pools, so part of the scope of work is doing the design and engineering and specifications for those upgrades.
So Bruce, if we wanted, so take the pool out there at Airways, if that pool needs help, and I've seen it, I'm sure it needs help, so wouldn't we just be better off taking bids to fix the pool properly, and then, and then the $92,000 could be spent on...
So part of this is being used to draft the technical specifications for the bids. So this $92,000 just isn't studying or doing an assessment of our, all of our pools? A portion of the work in this $92,000 is doing all the assessments, and then the design, engineering specifications for the renovation of those two pools.
And with that information, we can then go out to bid.
And with the information from that study, then we would go out to bid?
Yes.
So it's really centered around these two pools, huh?
Most of it, but it's also giving us a baseline as to what future work is going to be needed for our other pools, so that we can start budgeting for that in the subsequent years.
For example, our waiter pools, you know, some of the, some of the waiter pools that we have don't have filtration systems. This last year, what we actually ended up doing was having to put some pumps in the pools to drain the water, because we had to drain the water every single day, and then the next day when we were getting ready to operate the pools, we'd put, we'd put water in, and then we were dumping, manually dumping chlorine into the pools. The Health Department actually came out and threatened to shut us down, and they have already put us on notice that they will not allow us to operate these pools next year. So any pools that we're going to be, well, part of this analysis is going to be telling us exactly, based on the capacity of the pool, what type of filtration system we need. Because some of these pools were built, you know, as far back as, you know, the 1940s, they were galvanized metal pipes, we need to get and have an analysis of the type of piping, PVC piping that we need, the width of the piping, so that the water can, so that the water can be, go through the circulation system in a specific span of time in accordance with the county's health standards.
Okay, and there's no way that, and so I go, I know this is swimming upstream a little bit, no pun intended, but there's no way in the bid process we discover what needs to be done at these pools? We need to tell the people making the bid what we need done?
Right. Because no one's going to give you a bid based on, without a scope of work as exactly what the work is going to entail, because then they're going to just, they go, what do you want us to bid on? So this is going to, again, give us an assessment of our pools, but the primary focus is, as we do with anything else, we're hiring somebody to basically develop the technical specifications that would be used for a supporting bid to renovate both these pools, Airways and Frank H. And those funds were allocated this year for that work.
Now, when you keep talking about just those two pools, then that scares me again, because I'd like to, I mean, for 92 grand, we could get a decent, that's replacing one of them, maybe.
No.
No?
No. Splash parks, as I was, come to learn, for example, are close to $300,000 for a splash pad. I don't think we're going to replace a pool for 92. If we would, I would be putting pools in before I put a splash pad.
Splash park for $300,000, okay, that's a different, okay, that's a different problem. All right, thank you, Manuel, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I already know what you're thinking.
Yeah, yeah, can Blue Ribbon Carpet Care do that work?
Are you going to make a motion?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the item. All right, all those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 6-1. Councilmember Brandow voting no. We have staff here for 1Q. But you called, oh, did somebody pull, you pulled one?
Yeah, I pulled it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So I know that last, in our last meeting, we had some discussion regarding the proposed ordinance, and so as currently written, I know that there was some, a change that was made, I had suggested that maybe we'll consider doing an administrative action, or some type of infraction, but I'm still opposed to leaving misdemeanor. I, I don't believe that, that a misdemeanor is appropriate. I think that really is sending a wrong message, kind of, to some degree criminalizing business owners, and there may be some unintended consequences in terms of if some of these business owners are immigrants, and at some point they try to naturalize, there can be some unintended consequences, because now they would have a criminal record. So for the purpose, I would make a motion to strike out misdemeanor, and maybe just continue going the code enforcement route, where there's an administrative citation, a fine, or some type of infraction. So that's what I would propose, if the author is willing to, that's the only way that I would support the, the ordinance. I understand that there are some issues that we're trying to address in terms of cleanliness and for the, for neighborhoods, and so I could support something without having a misdemeanor included, if that's okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Soria. It's the first time I've been called an author, so I appreciate that. I don't know if it's good or bad, but, no, and I appreciate you pointing that out to me earlier. There, I know when, when I first presented this, there was some concerns from some of my colleagues, and as I stated at that last meeting, I wanted to present it, have everybody, give everybody the opportunity to look at it, and go over any concerns or questions they may have, and, and basically what it was, was let's, let's make it a workable, a workable ordinance and, or amendment, and, and go from there, but we just needed something that, my main purpose was, was basically to, to clean up a lot of the, the businesses that sell used tires, and, and, you know, we keep talking about cleaning up the city. So I really appreciate you bringing that up and, and requesting that change. Makes a lot of sense, so I'll second it.
So essentially, Councilmember Soria made a motion to strike that language, Councilmember Quintero is her second, the last, the misdemeanor, the misdemeanor portion of this. So let me, let me, let us do it like this. Councilmember Soria, would you make a second amending, I'm sorry, would you make a motion amending the ordinance, striking that language?
Yes, so I would like to make a motion to strike misdemeanor from the proposed ordinance.
So accept the item, but strike misdemeanor. And Councilmember Quintero, you'll second that.
Yes, and basically, as we discussed, it, it basically brings us back to just the regular process that code enforcement goes through in notifying the person that you're not in compliance, you need, you have 30 days or something like that, but it just, it just becomes a part of our regular process, doesn't add anything more to it.
Okay, very good, we have a motion, we have a second. Councilmember Olivier.
I just, I had a couple of questions, and I did have a, have a chance to talk with Member Quintero about the, this ordinance, and, and so, just had a couple of additional questions, and someone in staff, I would love to hear from somebody from code enforcement or planning and development to talk about waste tires.
Not sure if we have anyone here, here for, for that. If you want, Councilmember Brandow is up, I can go try to get somebody from code staff to maybe answer those questions while Councilmember Brandow...
Yeah, I'm interested in, I'm interested in finding out what's, what's already on the books.
So can we do this? Can I, can I pause your line of questioning, allow Councilmember Brandow to go up, and then we'll get somebody from code down here for you? Is that okay?
Yeah, I guess, I guess that would be fine.
Okay, great, thanks. Councilmember Brandow.
Or do you just want to postpone it until we get somebody?
Are your questions for staff, too?
Well, no, I was going to just make a comment to Councilman Quintero, and you, you can make your determination, we might have to postpone until we get somebody here, but...
Okay, I'll, if you go ahead and question Councilmember Quintero, I'll, I'll get, I'll get code staff down here so we can answer Councilmember Olivier's specific questions.
Okay.
He wants code staff.
Okay, so Councilman Quintero, I want to, I thank you, because I think, I think we've got to where this satisfies me. If you remember, I wanted to help you with the blight type of problem, but I didn't want to penalize people who were trying to sell tires in North Fresno in a very responsible way, which is what I, what I mostly see, but being sensitive to your blight problem, I, I think this has really cleaned up now. So my question really becomes, unless I'm missing anything, City Attorney, does this allow me, the concerns that I had two weeks ago, where...
Thank you.
People that want to sell tires in a regular way, you know, they can still display tires within these parameters, they can still display tires, they just can't do it near the edge of the property, and they can't display a bunch of junky tires, but they can still display tires for sale at tire changing and tire facilities and gas stations and that type of thing.
Yes, this would allow up to 12 new tires to be displayed outside the building, and that can be on the ground or off the ground, on racks, and, but used tires would have to be displayed or stored off the ground on the exterior of the building, within the other restrictions, too.
Okay.
So you could have the, the stacks of new tires right in front of the door, you know, near the front window, like you see.
Okay. And, and if the facility is locked up or gated, can those tires stay out overnight?
Or... Yes.
Okay.
With, with certain restrictions, as far as near, being near the property line, and not over the fence height, and that kind of thing.
Okay, all right, all right, cool. That's really what I was worried about, making sure that people that were trying to do it responsibly, still could. So thank you, Councilman Quintero.
And to answer the other question, to the extent it's a legal question, right now, our code requires compliance with the state fire code concerning tires, so we can enforce existing state law that restricts certain storage of tires, but this is more specific than what that is. I think that was Councilmember Olivier's question.
Okay. I don't know if Councilmember Olivier quite asked all the questions yet, but Councilmember Brandow, are you, are you finished your line of questioning? Okay, Councilmember Olivier, the floor is back to you. If we could have code staff come, come down, I know Councilmember Olivier has questions.
Yeah, my only question is, can you outline for me the, the current regulations on the books as, as it, as they relate to tire displays and the storage of tires in the city of Fresno, please?
So we, my tire abatement team is a, Del Esteban Code Enforcement...
I'm sorry, there's a tire abatement team?
I have a tire abatement team.
And how many people do that, and how often do they do that?
Every day of the week, sometimes on Saturdays and Sundays. Their main focus is stray tires or abandoned tires, used tires that get illegally dumped. We pick them all up and get them to the state facility. We also go out and we inspect the used tires facilities. There are state rules about, depending on the size of your facility, how many tires you could have on site, how far they have to be away from fences, securing them in the evening, et cetera. We also run a tire amnesty program, which we did one this past Saturday between 8:00 and 2:00, over at the Target on Shields, where we took in, I think, 2,900 tires that people were able to drop off, and we put them in our bins and in our trailers, and then we'll get them to the state facility, and off they go. And last year, the number, I think, that we picked up from city streets and fields and what have you was 36,000 tires.
How many citations does your department issue for tire violations in, in a month, in a year?
I'd have to get that, I do not have that number off the top of my head. But most of the, most of the time, we're educating people, we'll go out and visit a tire shop just to take a look and say, you know, you've got too many, you know, you've got to reduce your load, okay, it's going to be scheduled for pickup. A lot of times, we run into backlog as far as the state goes, because we get them to a staging area for the state, and if they're filled up, and they're waiting to move them to their facility, we can't get people to move them to the facility local. So it does take some time.
Final question, talk to me a little bit about the, the state laws that are already on the books as it relates to tire storage.
Okay, again, mandated by the state, it's, your size of your facility, you know, what type of business you're conducting, making sure that paperwork, okay? When you buy a tire and you turn in a tire, most of the time you're paying a fee to have that tire taken somewhere else. So the state codes are looking at to make sure that they are getting to the state, that the money is allocated, and that we're not ending up with some, we're turning in tires, paying for them, they ended up on the street an hour after we turn them in.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just, I have a, and, and Member Quintero and council colleagues, I have a situation on, on Blackstone Avenue where, this is just south of McKinley, where I have a tire retailer, and he probably has 30 tires, new tires that are stacked in stacks of four, and then that are stacked horizontally, and then the one on the top is stacked vertically, and maybe, I would say that, that he has dozens of tires. And those are, are placed tastefully, and they're, they're placed in a, in a manner that the owner is obviously trying to attract people to the store and sell tires. This particular business owner, the small business owner is not a bad actor, there's no question about that. Across the street, there's a tire retailer, too, with a big stack of tires in the back, such as the ones that Member Quintero is, is concerned about, and I'm concerned about as well. Let me tell you about another situation I have. Somewhere in District 7, I have two gas stations, and they're on, one is on this corner, and one is on this corner, and the gas stations frequently run booze specials and beer specials, they have a walk-in cooler where you can go in and get beer. Well, we have some sign ordinances on the books, and what happens is, and I've seen this a number of times since I've, I've represented this area, is that the, the owners of the two gas stations enter into a war, a price war, on the cost of beer, and the way they gather, or the way they attract customers is because they, they put up large banners, and they put up big signs that say, you know, Keystone 18-pack, $5.99, or whatever, and so they become frustrated with one another, and they begin to use our code enforcement officers as a way to fight with one another, and I end up having both business owners call me on my cell phone and say, hey, Clint, my competitor across the street is becoming belligerent, and because we have too many signs-ups, and, and it's wasting our code enforcement department's time when they have to go out, and, and the business owners basically are using the apparatus of the, of the city government to make war on one another. And I see, I'm concerned that this, you know, the guy across the street from this tire retailer might say, oh, well, you know, this guy's got more than 12 tires out, and all of a sudden, now staff is going out to, to penalize this, this business owner. So I have, I, I appreciate the change you made to accommodate Councilmember Soria, and it makes this ordinance more attractive to me, but I, I still, I still have some pretty big questions, and I appreciate, I mean, we have this same situation that you're trying to rectify, you know, we, we border one another, and I have the same situations in, in the 7th District, and I really appreciate you bringing this forward. But, I mean, we, without input from the Chamber of Commerce, or maybe people who can weigh in, some tire store owners, I think that there should be a broader discussion before we, you know, take these, take these steps. So I'll, I'll be voting a friendly no today. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, and a second, and a, apparently a friendly no. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, item passes 6-1. Councilmember Olivier casting a no vote. All right, we will now move on in our agenda, we'll come to our general administration items. We have item 2A, actions pertaining to the processing of green waste materials and co-mingled recyclable materials. If we have staff up for that.
Thank you, Council President, City Council. This item before you is a recommendation to award a recyclable materials contract, Mid Valley Recycling, 10-year contract, and to award a 10-year contract to Kachergan Farms for green waste recycling. When I started about 15 months ago, there were two things I was told were going to have to happen. One, we got this little water project that we've been working on, moving that forward, and solid waste, that solid waste was going to require a 218 sometime in calendar year 2015, this year, that we're in, and we'd have to raise rates, and so we were set up on a mission to look at every opportunity we had within the solid waste utility to reduce the costs of that program, to see if we could defer the need for a solid waste increase. First thing we did was we renegotiated the contract with the Fresno County to reduce the tipping fee at the landfill. Next thing on board was we had the opportunity to then assign a recycling material contract to another vendor from Sunset, and in that, we saved $18 a ton for processing. The next opportunity we had was to renegotiate the contract for our transfer station operations, and we reduced the cost of the solid waste utility at that point. And then in February, when we did the rate plan, one of the conditions of the motion of approving the rate plan was that we had to actually hold the solid waste utility rate at its current level through June 30th of 2019. So we really looked at accelerating all the things we needed to do to get the cost down for the solid waste utility, and continued to look at some operational improvements. And the two other items on there were looking at a recycling contract that we had, we were not making any revenue, generating any revenue on the recyclable materials, so we saw an opportunity there. And based on some market research we had conducted, we identified that the cost of our green waste processing at the time was in that $23 to $24 a ton range, and that it, it could be reduced from that based on market conditions as they currently existed. So we issued an RFP, and we issued an RFP for co-mingled recycling, to see if we can, what opportunities were to generate revenue, and we issued an RFP, the same RFP had it in it, an opportunity to, for green waste recycling, to see if we could find where the market price, the new market price was for green waste recycling, and so that was, RFP was issued in May... And so that was, RFP was issued in May and then we wound up going, receiving the proposals at the end of June and through a, through a lot of things going on, we wound up receiving the proposals, doing the evaluations. And we are before you today with the recommendation for Mid Valley Recycling for the recyclable material contract and Kachergen Farms for the green waste recycling contract. We were in receipt of the, we are in receipt of the letter from last night from one of the vendors. We had processed some of that information and so, related to the $500,000 signing bonus, based on the current rate of solid wa, excuse me, green waste that we currently receive now, the addition of $500,000 to that vendor's proposal still left them about a half a million dollars more expensive than the recommended firm, Kachergen Farms. We currently receive about, our average the last 10 years on recyclable, on, excuse me, on green waste has been about 81,000 tons per year. And at that rate, the delta between the two vendors, including the $500,000 signing bonus was about a half a million dollars. So we, so that was considered. The other question related to the idea that by authorizing a higher rate to the other vendor, that it would make material available to the city through some other departments, we considered that, but as we all recall, that we got a refresher course on Proposition 218 during the water rate and that we have to charge a cost of service based on what does it cost to deliver service to individual communities, I mean, to individual properties. The other element of the 218 that we learned through the water rate plan, or we re-learned through the water rate plan was that we couldn't take money from one group of people and then assign the benefit of that extra money to other parties somewhere else, that they're just not something we could do, that we actually, if it cost a certain amount of dollar to deliver a service, we had to charge that service for that, that dollar for that service for that particular property. So while we thought it was a very gracious offer, it's just not something we can do to ask the residents, the 100,000 single-family residents that pay for the solid waste utility to pay a higher rate and that the city would take that delta and use that money for a benefit of other parties. It just, again, we've been through that process on the 218 and we were reminded, we had the, we had the Howard Jarvis folks participate closely with us in developing our rate plan for the rate and they continuously reminded us, cost of service, cost of service, lowest common denominator, benefiting parties have to receive a proportionate share of the benefit based on the money that they pay. And so that was where we are right now with the recommendation for the Kachergen Farms. It is at 1675, the lowest cost we can offer to the residents of the citizens of Fresno, again, to offer, to require them to pay $18 a ton so that the city can take that delta and distribute that benefit to others in the city. It's just, it's just not something we're comfortable doing. And again, we learned through the 218, it's just not possible with the way that particular program is structured. So with that, we are available for any questions and be happy to talk with you more.
And before we, before we start, Tommy, and I apologize if you went over this, but could you, again, for everyone listening in the audience, do, quickly compare the current rate, what we're paying now and what we're receiving for both the green waste as well as the recyclables and the net benefit that that presents to us in the overall goal of maintaining all of our utility rates at the current, or not to increase our utility rates over the next three to four years?
Right, so this particular set of contracts equates to about a 1.2, 1.3 million dollar savings to the solid waste utility every year for the next few years. And that's the advantage we're going to take to extend that rate out to June 30, 2019. Again, the original plan when we arrived was, we're going to have to rate increase this year and we've been doing everything we can to push it out, push that. And then, as we did the water rate, the direction was given. The, you know, the condition of approving the water rate was, you've got to hold the sewer rate and you've got to hold the solid waste rate and that's what we've been doing. We've been chasing dollars ever since that day. We've been always chasing dollars, but we've amped up our chasing of dollars to try and keep those two rates stable through June 30, 2019.
All right, thank you, thank you, Tommy. You will now take the item out to the public. I have a couple of cards up here, so I'll call the cards first and then anyone who wants to come down to the lectern is welcome. First up, we have Scott Ivy. If you could state your name and address for the record and then you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. My name is Scott Ivy and I'm here representing West Coast Waste, one of the proposers on this green waste portion of the bid. Is that better? I'll be brief and I'll try to stick to some of the responses we received from staff. When I read the staff determination and recommendation, my first question was, well, to my clients, what's the problem? It looks to me like an apples-to-apples comparison. As far as the value and cost of the city, they came in a little under you. But then I read the proposals and it wasn't an apples-to-apples comparison. There are items in our proposal which are not mentioned in the staff report, we would have been happy to discuss them, happy to address some of the issues that were raised this morning, they're not even in there. That worries me as both a representative of West Coast Waste and as a rate payer and taxpayer. There was no additional benefits offered by Kachergen, it was 1675. We keep saying, West Coast Waste bid is 18, that's the number. That's not really the number. What the number said in our bid is 18 asterisk plus our bonus. It's not a gift basket, it's $500,000 now in the bank, not a buck and a quarter dependent upon how tonnage may or may not go over the next seven to 10 years. It's $18 plus $500,000 right now. That could have been factored into the number, that's what an asterisk is, that's what an evaluation is. So that brings it down right there. And then you get to this give-back, the city is currently paying about $20 to $25 a yard for finished product, for all drought relief medians, that's important work, it's going to increase. In addition to the $500,000, which brings down the 18, they're offering 10,000 yards a year of finished product, product for which the city currently pays $20 to $25 for free for the entire deal of the contract. Under any reasonable and considered definition of the term best value and least cost to the city, I cannot see how these two offers even compare. And that's before you get to the fact, this isn't an unknown quantity. For all these additional benefits, you're getting the company that has provided this service without interruption, problem, or price increase for the last 13 years. It's not someone trying to break in and throw some money at you. It's a known quantity that values the taxpayers and saves them money and is the best value. We would request on behalf of West Coast and as a taxpayer, that the council award the green waste portion of the contract to West Coast, give them another 10 years to keep providing services and immediately reap the significant cash benefits to the city, value going forward, that aren't dependent upon future tonnage. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have David Belikian. If you could state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. Some of it will be redundant, but for the last two-
Can you step a little bit closer?
During the last two awards, the council, the council has split the green waste to two vendors. The two prior council have thought that that would be the most appropriate to split the contract between two vendors. West Coast Waste was fortunate to be one of the vendors during that time. The RFP states that, that the committee reserves the right to negotiate terms and conditions. I respectfully disagree, it's not a half a million dollar difference. The West Coast Waste bid is substantially better than the other bid and it's not half a million dollars. I believe the value of money is powerful, half a million dollar today is worth more than a slower benefit during time. 10 years, the value of money is maybe worth less. Seven year, a seven-year contract, the value of a half a million dollars is even worth more. We're offering a half a million dollars right now to put into this program, plus 10,000 yards a year of material. We talked today about trees and parks, that's what this material is for. It goes to about $20, $25, that's $200,000 a year of material. Over 10 years, that's $2 million. So we're offering that for the parks, free, for the city, for the community, for the household, the parks and recreation. Also, Operation Cleanup is a, about 10,000, I believe, tons a year, that is not included in the 73,000 tons. We've offered to accept that free. So these are all the items that were put in the package to give to staff to look at. And I believe that council needs all the information, the best decision is one that is given, provided all the information to the heads of our people to look at. The last contract was pre-9/11, after that, gas prices skyrocketed, we never asked for a price increase. After, we kept, we just sucked it up. And I'm, by the way, Dennis' brother, West Coast Waste. During this last phase, there was a two-year extension on this contract. Today, we offered to drop our rate presently and during the next two years to work with the city of Fresno, so the city of Fresno would not raise the rate. We're a team player, we offered to do that. We would drop the rates for two years, in fact, would even drop it now. I believe that's very important. Also, with drought, and the city of Fresno orders this material, they want material, they say we wish we can get more of it for parks, but you know, because of budgetary reasons, we cannot do that. Is that the red one?
That's the red one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dennis Belikian. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Dennis Belikian, president of West Coast Waste. I want to briefly address one comment that was made earlier regarding 218. If that were the case with regards to not being able to accept that material, I would have loved to have the opportunity to establish a value for that material and to perhaps backtrack that in dollars to the bid, if that were the case. And we are technically barred from allowing that product to be delivered to the city, which they are currently buying, that we would have loved to have met with council staff to discuss a way of mathematically backtracking dollars for that value to lower the bid. And again, we're hearing different numbers, it's been like a moving target as far as the quantities, because quantities come into very significant play into determining what is the true benefit that we are offering the city. In the addendum, there was a 71,000 or 72,000 tons was the target that they had projected to be the, to be the, to be the multiplier. In the staff report, it became 78, today I heard 83,000 tons. That has significant impact onto what is the net dollars that we are really offering. If you use the 71,000 or dollar, the lower the multiplier, our saving is more greater. In addition to seven to 10 years is what was mentioned as to what the year length of this contract was going to be, in written, in the verbal meeting that we had, the pre-bid, it was mentioned that it would be a seven-year contract. Again, the shorter the term, the greater the savings we're offering, is what I wanted to discuss in that regard. I want to talk briefly regarding the comfort that's offered by providing multiple contractors to service a contract of this nature for a very long period of time. You cannot disregard the prudent aspect of that, of doing so. I'm not going to go into great detail, but fuel was mentioned. And this was, this contract was awarded pre-9/11. As a result, fuel tripled, quadrupled in price. If it was a buck a gallon, I think it went to about four to four and a half dollars a gallon. Throughout the course of this relationship we've had with the city, multiple times we met with staff requesting, would we be interested in accepting all the material because our counterpart, the other vendor who was handling a smaller portion of the green waste, was requesting price increases. By having multiple contractors, it gives the city the opportunity where that no contractor has any leverage over the city to request an increase because now there's one playing against the other. I told the city, I would be more than happy to do anything that the city would ask for. This is the one contract that we have, we've always catered to the city of Fresno, we don't have a large network of suppliers. We've been in the valley for over 100 years, our family, this is our home and this is the contract that we are hoping to continue with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I'll take this item out to the public, if we have any members of the public. Come on down and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, President Baines, members of the city council. My name is Joe Guagliardo, representing Kachergen Farms Composting. Pleased to be here today. Directly or indirectly, Kachergen Farms Composting has been providing green waste recycling services to the city of Fresno for approximately 20 years. When the contract went out previously, one of the winning bidders was Sinagro. And what Sinagro did is they immediately contracted with Kachergen Farms to handle their material and they really actually never processed green waste for the city. So Kachergen Farms has been handling green waste for the past 10 years. It's interesting, the representations, the Kachergen Farms contract, the difference between the Kachergen Farms contract and the next bid, which was West Coast Waste, is approximately, represents a savings of approximately $96,000 a year. If you spread that out over the 10 years of the contract, that's approximately a $960,000 difference. Even as the previous speaker said, if they put 500,000 on the table plus approximately $25,000 of material on the table, that still makes a difference of $210,000 over the life of the contract that the city would save by contracting with Kachergen Farms Composting. It's interesting to note that Kachergen Farms Composting has been able to provide services indirectly to the city of Fresno for a rate of approximately $18, $18.10 a ton for the previous 10 years, while the city, as pointed out by your utilities director, has been paying $23 plus a ton for the intervening 10 years. So there's been a spread over the period of this existing contract. So I believe the opportunity for the city to recoup or make savings in the future that can keep them from having to raise rates is clearly before you today. The Kachergen Farms Composting bid was a responsible bid, they provided the services for a considerable amount of time. They have not only their local facility here in Fresno that can receive material, they also have a second facility in Avonall that can receive material, so they have no problem of being able to receive all the material provided by the city of Fresno and meet the city's needs today and in the future for the next 10 years. We appreciate the opportunity to make the proposal to you and again, just want to reiterate, notwithstanding what's been presented today, accepting the Kachergen Farms Composting bid will represent a savings based on the information the city has provided of $210,000 over the 10-year life of the contract. I appreciate it very much, thank you for your time and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Brando.
Thank you, Council President. All right, a lot of my questions were answered, yeah, might as well, but you answered already a lot of them in your first presentation and then hearing from both West Coast Waste and Kachergen Farms, I kind of got their take on it. When I got this letter about the concerns from West Coast Waste, I asked our city manager a quick question about it. And so, Tommy, you've seen this letter, it's your position that, that we just, in the process officially, we don't get to count the $500,000 offer, is, we don't get to count that, right?
No, so we can, we, if you count the $500,000 offer, the delta, there's still a delta exists between the two proposals favoring Kachergen. Kachergen still is the low bidder. You know, there has been a lot of information about the, about the waste quantities varying. The lowest in the last 10 years is 73,000 tons, the highest in the last 10 years is 85,000 tons, average is 81. Where we are right now with the drought, we're seeing some adjustments, so that's why we're still kind of, what will the number be going forward? But it's going to, it's never been lower than 70,000.
Okay, but, so what you, what you're just telling me is, even with the $500,000 upfront bonus, there's still a difference-
Still a delta.
Is still a delta, okay. All right, and then, was it just these two companies that responded to our RFP process?
No, no, our friend, Mr. Kalpikoff also submitted a proposal for green waste.
I wondered why he was here.
He's on the recycled material side.
All right, then, were we provided at council a breakdown of the RFP responses? I never saw one, but that could be all my fault.
No, no. No, no. So, um, we did not put copies of all the proposals in your bid. We just gave you the summary table of what the pricing offers were. That's what was in your, that was in the council pack as one of the, exhibit one, I believe, to the.
Okay, right. I saw that.
And councilmember, that is standard operating procedure. Every time we award a contract, we don't list everyone else who submitted bids, whether it's a public works.
Say that again, Bruce, when?
We do not, as a practice, provide you with a list of all the other bid submissions and the, and the costs, uh, whether it's a public works project, or it's this, uh, project, or this contract. As a practice, we just award, uh, or make a recommendation based on, uh, what we believe is the best, uh, recommendation to present to council.
Okay. But we, okay, so when, so all really council sees is the price, the bottom line.
Summary tables of the prices offered.
Yeah, summary table, right. And I did see that, but I didn't see the, the guts of the proposal. Now, so I want to go into that in a second, but council, council does not have to choose the lowest bid. We're not bound to choose the lowest bid.
I'm gonna, I guess, I, I would say that the way our, the solid waste utility, the way we set the rates in that utility has to be governed by the proposition two eighteen. So, we have to demonstrate to the community that we are providing them a service that if it costs a dollar, you get a dollar's worth of service, that they at their property will get that value. So, in this instance, we have a proposal at sixteen-seventy-five to provide that service at their property. We have another one that's eighteen, to provide that service at that property. The suggestion would be, we'll take that X, that part of that delta and use it to buy mulch for the parks and the streets. We just, I can't take utility money and distribute it to the rest of the general fund. It's just not.
Understood.
It's inconsistent with how we, we set the rates and we expose ourselves.
And let me add, I appreciate the half a million dollars, but let's, it's, it's, it's included in, in that rate.
Say that again, Bruce.
They'll recover the half a million dollars or the life of the contract.
Okay, yeah.
Because they're charging a higher rate.
In the price difference.
Right.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay. Let's see. Um, earlier today, in, inside of the consent calendar, I didn't bring it up because it wasn't a big deal, but we are ending up going back out to RFP for a solar energy facility. And really, that was item one K from our consent calendar, and that all happened because of questions that council was able to tackle about RFP process a couple months ago.
Right. So, the questions on that one, that prompted that one to, for us to reconsider it and hit the reset on that was, was, we only got one bidder.
Right.
This one, we got multiple bidders.
We got multiple bidders.
So, we got, we got markets. Um, and the other indication in that one was that the price was probably outside of what the market really is for that. Here, today, we're paying about twenty-four dollars a ton for greens, green waste recycling. These prices are all less than that, sixteen-seventy-five, eighteen. So, we don't have a question about, are we overpaying the market price for green waste? We're getting the market price at sixteen-seventy-five. So, those are the two things that prompted us to revisit the solar, and we're going to do that. This one, there are some questions, but it's not because of, we didn't get enough bidders, or we have pricing that is inconsistent with where we think the market is.
Right. But still, for me, Tommy, I, I think I want to have a meeting with you and tear into the guts of the, the responses a little bit. I don't know if my council colleagues are interested in that, but for sure I am. I mean, this is a, this is a big deal, and we saw in our contract with American, um, earlier, that we had to tackle early this spring, that, you know, sometimes it's best if we ta, we take that extra bit of time and ask those tough questions. So, um, so for me, I'm gonna make, um, a motion that we continue this item. I don't know when our next council meeting is. It's not to continue it. I, we need to make a decision relatively quickly. Somebody asked, my concerns are mostly on the green waste part in response to this letter and some other stuff, and somebody asked if I was just gonna separate the two, but that's not quite fair for me. So, I, I want to just continue both halves of the item, although I'm not really too worried about the first part of this proposal. But I'd like to continue this item till our next council meeting. Okay. I'm, I'm done, council president.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Soria. Oh, quick question. Did you have a date that you want to continue that to, Councilmember Brando?
Ten-twenty-two is, I think, the next one.
Twenty-second? Uh, we don't, I don't think we need to time it. Do, do we, council? Uh, you want to, you want to time it at ten-thirty? Or at nine o'clock?
You can either time it, or it can be the first item on general admin.
Okay. We'll keep it consistent with like it was today. So, we'll continue this to, till ten-twenty-two. Did I hear that right? Ten-twenty-two, and it will be item two A. Councilmember Soria.
Thank you. So, I appreciate the questions raised by, um, my colleague. I share some of the same concerns. I will say that, um, to me, I'm gonna just, you know, make a few comments. Um, I know that the summary of proposals was submitted. Um, Bruce, you mentioned that, um, it's not typical that the council receives, um, the detail of proposals, correct?
For RFP and consulting contracts, that is correct. So, when we do major projects under.
Yeah, while it may not be typical, at least, you know, for me, I think that, given that, how big this contract is, um, for me, it would be important to have those details. I will point out very honestly that we didn't even get the summary of proposals submitted until after we got the, the letter from the attorney. So, to me, that's, that kind of smells, and it's concerning as a taxpayer, as a council representative, where we need to show transparency. Um, I think that it was very appropriate for the council to know the different bids at minimum, and the summary doesn't even say, even though, um, we didn't take into account, um, the half a million dollars, but we didn't even get any of those details. We, we did not have those details until an attorney that represents one of the, the bidders, um, pointed that out to us. And so, to me, um, I cannot make a decision on, on, um, on such a large contract when we're not being given the entire information until a later date. So, I, I do believe that that's very important in terms of transparency for our community, so that our taxpayers know, myself, um, to be informed. And so, I, I just want to put that on the record so that we know, and that, you know, for future also RFPs, that we do have, um, the information that we can take into account so that we make the best decision on behalf of our taxpayers. So, that was one of the comments that I wanted to make. I have, uh, more question, questions, I guess, in terms of just, um, general contracts with, for solid waste agreements. Are they typically this long?
Yeah. Some of them are longer, so we, we've been, this one, we're trying to actually ratchet back. We have some fifteen, twenty-year contracts that I wish had a different term on them. So, this one, we're kind of bringing, reining into about, to ten years.
And, um, would anything preclude us from awarding two agreements? I know that we look at our history, and in the past, we had two agreements with two separate entities. Um, would we be precluded, the way the RFP was written? Does it allow us, for the city of Fresno, to do maybe two agreements?
And so, the way we put it, we did put that in the, in the proposal, that the city reserves the right, depending on how the proposals come in, to enter into contracts with two, with two vendors, if that's how it turned out. So, uh, it is possible. We did anticipate that. Our only, uh, my only concern would be that if we had, if we awarded one at eighteen dollars, and we awarded one at sixteen-seventy-five, the market price is sixteen-seventy-five, so we would be overpaying a buck twenty-five on the one. So, we just have to make sure that we're, the contracts were equal or, or comparable in, in that respect. We wouldn't want to, to charge the residents more than they needed to pay.
And so, previously, when we had awarded those two contracts, the previous contracts to the two different, um, entities, um, the price was the same?
No, they were, they were, I don't know how those got negotiated, but they were within like forty-five cents of each other. One was like, I've got it in here.
So, they, so they were not exactly the same?
They were not exactly the same.
Okay. So, then we could potentially do the same. The other question, um, that I wanted to ask, I know that we mentioned Prop two eighteen and the impacts that, um, kind of the, the restrictions because of Prop two eighteen, we can't account for those ten thousand yards that were being offered, um, as a quantity?
Subsidy for the general fund, right.
Um, so, would we have been precluded from talking to the bidder and figuring out if that asterisk, if they were willing to like, um, I think one of the, um, the, I think Dennis mentioned that they would have, um, considered lowering the price to take those, um, savings into account? Could, would we have been precluded from doing that during the process?
Yes. There is actually, and, and if the, the decision is, and it sounds like it's, that's where you're gonna go, to table the item until twenty-second, the no contact rule still applies. The council is precluded from meeting with any vendors, uh, with regards to their proposals. In a lot of ways, trying to mitigate some of what's, appears to be going on right now, where we're trying to negotiate, again, another rate, which is not consistent with our procurement practices.
So, I think Mr. Belakian hit it perfect when he said, you know, I had this eighteen dollars, five hundred thousand brings it down, probably should have just translated that into a different dollar per ton, and the ten thousand dollars per ton, he said, you know, they'd be, you know, those probably should have been calculated and put into the bid at sixteen dollars. I'm just making up, and some other number than eighteen, but when the eighteen came in.
So, did the, the bidder have to do that, or could the city, in analyzing it, have calculated that and said, um, we can do an agreement with them because those are, those would be the savings, so this is what the rate would have come out to?
So, we did the calculation for the five hundred thousand, and it, and then there was still a delta there. They were still the high bidder, they were, they were higher than the low bidder. Um, we did not do a calculation on the two hundred thousand tons because we couldn't accept that material and give it to the general fund with money we were taking from the solid waste ratepayers. So, asking solid waste payers to pay a dollar twenty-five more so I can give money to the general fund, we didn't ask that question because we couldn't do that.
So, if it would have not been for, um, that specific, um, item, if it would have been another two hundred thousand dollars in savings, just generally, then we could have taken it into account?
Take it off the number, just take it off this eighteen dollars.
But because they specifically said, for that purpose.
Parks, medians, streets, all these things that, because the solid waste department, we don't buy mulch. We don't, we don't, we don't buy mulch on behalf of the citizens for any purpose, so it would be a purpose that isn't currently part of the rate plan and the rate structure.
Okay. Um, yeah, and so, those were, um, most of my questions. I, I would support, um, continuing this, um, because I may have other things, and I, I know that I, I did request the actual proposals, because I would like to, myself, actually kind of go through them. Um, so, I do appreciate you guys sending those to me. I know that it may not be typical, but I think, given how big this contract is, um, you know, I, I would like to have the time to go through, um, the proposals. Thank you.
Councilmember Brand.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, first question is really, um, another one, I'm okay with the continuation, but should we, the controversy is really on the, uh, green waste, not the, uh, recycles. Should we bifurcate the, uh, the amendment? If everybody's okay to let the, there's seem to be no controversy on the recycling, unless everybody wants to continue that?
I, I'm not exactly sure that that's the case. Uh, councilmember Soria raised some questions on the green, green.
Just a question, then. Would you consider?
And I have, and I have some questions on the, that one as well.
Okay, okay.
And, and councilmember Capriolio still punched up. I don't know if he has questions, but.
Okay. Uh, and, um, I've listened to the, your answers, which were good, and my colleagues' questions, which were, uh, similar to mine. Um, how many tons per year do we do, Tommy?
So, in the last ten years, the average is eighty-one thousand tons a year. That's been the average. Low in that ten-year period is seventy-three.
Right.
Um, and the high was like eighty-five. So, it's in that seventy to eighty-five range, depending on if we got water to irrigate or we don't, and how that's, so, it's related.
But given about a two percent growth rate, be safe to assume over the next ten years, that's probably gonna increase, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And we get out of the drought, and we start getting back to a little more normal.
Right. Some of these factors then will be, you know, impacted by, uh, the growth of the city of Fresno.
Correct.
Okay. And just for a little history, I know you said earlier that, uh, the RFP, we didn't evaluate the, um, the bonuses and some of the other things, because, uh, they should have been factored, according to you, into the bid itself. But I want to remind you, and you weren't here when you, this happened, but two or three years ago, we had, uh, proposals on commercial solid waste, and actually residential solid waste, that we did accept and factor in bonuses upfront. So, there is a precedent within the city for factoring bonuses. Not that it should have, should not apply here, but just, just for the record, there have been, uh, bonuses. Um, and, um, based on what I've, you know, the presentations I've heard, uh, there's roughly about, as it currently stands, about a four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-per-year savings on recycling to the ratepayers, and about three-hundred-thousand dollars savings on green waste, correct? So, that's still the good news, it's about eight-hundred-thousand dollars. And this doesn't count that last year, when, um, Sunset was bought out by, um, um, our other vendor, that, Sydney Valley, that he voluntarily did not charge us.
Dropped the processing fee.
Basically, we brought the recyclables in at no cost, and pursuant to the contract, could have charged us something, the equivalent of about a half a million dollars, is that a, three-hundred thousand?
Well, it was actually, it was a condition of an assignment.
Right.
Okay. But either way, we benefited.
Oh, yeah.
The city of Fresno, or the ratepayers. Okay. Just to bring up the history, okay? So, if we look at that, this current, um, uh, proposal, and really between the two, top two, there's roughly ninety-six thousand dollars a year, based on the average tons you talked about. And if you take away the five hundred thousand dollars and say a value of two-hundred thousand on the other item, that's still a net savings of three-hundred-and-sixty thousand, correct?
Correct.
But if you calculate present value, future value, I'll just use five percent. Five percent at five hundred thousand today is eight-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, ten years from now. If we take our return on investment, which our, our pension board, I believe, is seven and three-quarters, I, I'd just use seven and a half percent. So, we, we've been very successful at investing money. At seven and a half percent, the future value of five hundred thousand in ten years is over a million dollars. It's a million and thirty. So, there is, again, that's speculative on how we're trying to factor out, you know, present value, future value. But it can make a difference almost to the point where actually one offer could exceed the other offer.
Any other assumptions?
Based on assumptions, okay? Now, the other factor is the qualitative, you know, and now, it's, so we put the major thrust on the pricing. In your opinion, did your staff fully evaluate the qualitative factors to?
So, we're talking about the quality of the service to be provided by the vendors?
Right.
Yes, yes. So, Kucherin is well-known to us, as they indicated, they are an indirect service provider. There's a middleman in there, and fortunately, through this contract, we can get rid of the middle person and go directly with them and have that done. And the, uh, West Coast Waste, been a great partner, been, so there's not, this is not about quality of service, because there, we figured they were, we, we were chasing dollars. We've been chasing dollars on this, and the two that we came down to were all qualified candidates, and we took the sixteen-seventy-five.
Yeah. And being here seven years, I have seen contractors come up here asking for adjustments on their price, and in some cases, we've given them. So, to have one who, for a lo, ten years, never asked, you know.
Pretty good.
Sends it to me, and also, directly related to that, is basically our relationship to vendors and the message that the city sends out on doing, we're all talking about doing business in the city of Fresno. We wanted to have more business, attract more businesses, we want existing businesses to flourish. So, we have a responsibility to, to send out a message that we value these relationships. We, not everything is always measured in, exactly in dollars and cents. So, um, just my thoughts as we're gonna move this thing forward, and I appreciate all the time, and I know it's been a long time coming to this point, so I hope that, is it October twenty-second, that we, yeah, that we can find a resolution, and, uh, and in the end, we want to make what's best for the, the ratepayers of the city of Fresno. So, again, thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
And thanks for the people that showed up today and their points of view.
Thank you.
Uh, and just, I'm gonna pause for a moment and just make sure we do, uh, welcome our, uh, Fresno Cochee Sister City delegation. I see you guys have come into the room. Uh, if you all will stand up for a minute for us. We, we, we're very happy that you came today. We, we know that we're running a little bit behind schedule, but I wanted to acknowledge you. I know councilmember Brand, uh, is, uh, being a very gracious host to you all, the, this gracious host to you all this time that you're here, but in just a few moments, we'll come down and give you a proper welcome into the city of Fresno, but I wanted to acknowledge you all and let you know that we have not forgotten about you, but as soon as we are done with this item, you will be our very next item of business, so thank you all for coming, and thank you for being patient with us. Councilmember Capriolio.
Thank you, council president, first, I want to thank the vendors for the quality of service that's been provided over the last thirteen or fourteen years, it's really well-appreciated by the city of Fresno. Second, the competitive bidding process, I love it, I love it, this is what America's all about, and this puts us in the best light possible for the ratepayers and taxpayers of our community, so this is a great day, and really exciting for me to see how this works and how we're going to reach a conclusion eventually, but it's marvelous, I love it. Next, I don't know if West Coast has a net-net fee determined based upon what their calculations are and the things they address today, but that would be important to include, I believe, in their view on what is net-net, maybe our view might be different, or the other vendor might be different, I don't know, but if we can get all those on the table, that would be most helpful, and we can make some good decisions. And then the question I had for you, Tommy, or Bruce, is, as per the contract, is the rate locked in, locked in for ten years?
Right, that's what we will be, that's the final negotiation, is locking in the rate, and then, you know, we got to get the operational things kind of put into the contract, hours of operation, place of disposal, turnaround time, so we got to get all those details, but the plan is that those are, the proposal was based on those are locked-in rates.
And is there a provision in the contract that actually secures that lock-in rate for that period of time?
And that's what we, that would be the next thing, we would work with the city attorney's office to get all those final Ts and Cs nailed down and drafted into the contract.
And then if through the analysis and what we're going to see on the twenty-second, I'm still a little bit confused about two eighteen, so if we could address that some way, that would really be helpful, because it seems like there's a split of opinion, at least to my ears, and if we could address that in a little more detail, that would be excellent as well, so thank you all for your presentations today, and again, this competitive bidding is fantastic, and we're going to reach a great decision, whatever it is, it's going to be the best decision for the city of Fresno.
We're going to reduce the cost, absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President, Tommy, the information that was requested by councilmember Soria, will each, can you get that to all of us?
I think that's a good idea, I think we'll get it all to you, all of the proposals, the full, so she didn't get the summary, she got the full proposals from each of the vendors, so we'll send that out to all the districts.
I think that's a good idea, you're agreeing to that. Tommy, I had four questions that I was going to ask, and I just, I'm going to present them to you, and after hearing the discussion from some of my colleagues, I may have some more, probably will meet with you later, but just to let you know kind of where I'm going with it is, the questions that I was going to ask, and maybe they'll show up in the RFP, or we can talk about them, was, what was a whole-dollar value of each of the proposals submitted, including upfront cash to the city? How much did Midvalley, Kachergan, and West Coast offer as an upfront cash offer? What was the criteria used to determine the best value for the city, and was it just the price per ton of waste? And finally, was the upfront cash incentives to the city part of the criteria as determined? So that's kind, you know, I want you to be kind of going mulling those for us when we meet, and like I said, I'll probably have some additional questions, and I've got a question for, I guess, Dennis, how many, if the contract was given to the other company, how many employees would be affected?
Our entire company, we have servicing this contract, thirty-five-plus employees would be affected by it.
Thirty-five plus?
Yes, would be affected by this contract.
All right.
With trucking, processing, clerical, thirty-five-plus employees would be affected.
So if we continue with you, you're already set up to get going, you don't, I mean, you're just going to follow through and make improvements in your company?
Absolutely, we just continue, like, no change, just a brand-new day, I have to, one thing I have to make comment, if I can get off the question, I have to appreciate the efforts of the department, definitely, these are some very difficult trying times for the city with the water issue, trying to reduce the rates, Tommy, I think, did a great job in explaining to us anyway, the significance of trying to give it your best shot, give it your best number, because these are very critical times, and we took that very seriously in preparing this number, I believe others as well took that same concerns and gave it their best shot, we bid significantly lower, I think our rates are probably one of the lowest in the state, we're that low, it's great then to take the best number, whichever the number, whichever contractor it may be, the lowest number, and to take that number and live with it, the issue is when you're getting down to these territories, these levels, if suddenly goes sideways, it would not be the first time in the world, in fact, one of the contractors servicing this contract had filed for reorganization, again, triggered the phone call to our office, would you be interested in taking, accepting all the material, in fact, which we have, I have to also mention that as well, there has been times throughout the past ten years when we had to receive all the material because the other site couldn't accommodate, there, my point is, there is benefit to and comfort to a city to have multiple parties supplying, servicing a contract, this is a spontaneous material that has spontaneous combustion, that can, okay, I just want to express the significance, you may have the best number in the world, that's great, but what if something goes sideways for ten years, and again, one other final point, I have to mention again, very important, is that it was a seven-to-ten-year proposal, we are going based upon the information given to us, in the pre-bid, it was mentioned that it would be a seven-year contract, well, when you use a seven-year contract, and you do the matrix again, all the math, you're going to find that our number is significantly the better number.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Kachergan and Mr. Gagliardo, you know, I just, I really believe that the fact that we're asking for delay on this is really going to be helpful for us in making the best-informed decision on what we're, you know, where we're going with this in terms of what's best for the city, so thank you both for your being here and your presentation, I really appreciate it, and Tommy, one of the questions that you, or responses that you had, or councilmember Soria said it was, we're not bound to choose the lowest bid, but it's what you're recommending.
Yes, we're chasing dollars, we're chasing dollars, pretty focused.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Thank you, recommended, thank you.
Recommended.
Okay, those are all the councilmembers I have punched up, I think, and so then, as always, I'll make the final, or would potentially be the final comments on this item of the day, and I'll just start out with just saying that I certainly wholeheartedly support the continuation for really all of the reasons mentioned, Tommy, I shared some of that with Bruce this morning to let him know what some of my reservations were, some of them have been addressed by my colleagues, so I'll start off my remarks with a little bit of commentary, and then I certainly do have a few questions, and I think what probably disturbed me the most was not really feeling like in the staff report, I can make an informed decision, you know, based on just the summary, I would have loved more detail on the summary of the proposals, what were you?
Exhibit one document.
Yeah, exhibit, what were you really contrasting, what was really happening, what were they really proposing, you know, in the, in the, the staff report, we mentioned that obviously one of, we're taking price into consideration, but we're also taking value into consideration, well, it's my opinion that we as the council are the ones that determine really what the value is, that's really our role up here as policymakers, to determine, because we kind of look up at a broader angle and have to determine what the best value for the city overall is, you know, notwithstanding, I hear you mention the two eighteen process, but it seemed to me as though some of the value-added portions of at least the West Coast proposal was withheld from us, not intentionally, I don't believe that.
Right.
But it was.
Right.
And we weren't able to really evaluate what value was, we just took your word for it, that this was, you know, the price and the lowest price, and just obviously through a little bit of, you know, Q and A today, we realized, well, actually eighteen dollars a ton wasn't the real rate, it would have been something less than that, so here we are, kind of like, what are we really looking at? And so I just want to put that out there, that, you know, that was the troubling, I was not going to, if I was forced to vote on this today, I would have voted no on everything, right, I mean, because I just didn't have enough information to say that this was the best deal that we were getting, which leads me into some of my questions, based off of some of the comments I've heard today, and I'm going to start with a question that councilmember Soria had, that I followed all the way out of my mind, that I'm not exactly sure she fully answered, I know Bruce tried to answer it, but I'm going to lob it back up there, the ten thousand, ten thousand yards a year that they were going to contribute to us for our drought relief and et cetera, what is the value of that?
So there's price versus cost, they've identified that we currently pay twenty to twenty-five dollars a ton, the Department of Solid Waste, Solid Waste Division doesn't buy any, so I can't tell you if that's a market number or just a number that's out there available, so, they do make sales, so I'm sure that they cross the scale, and they do a weigh ticket, and they're probably charging twenty to twenty-five a ton, so they are charging twenty to twenty-five a ton, I'm not saying that's the market price, that's what they charge.
So if nothing else, we'll assign the value of two hundred fifty thousand dollars because we don't have anything to dispute that, so my question was, and I totally understand to some degree, almost, that we can't necessarily subsidize the rest of the city through ratepayer functions, I get that argument, however, what I did not hear, and what I'm almost certain that we can do, is if there in fact is a market value to that bonus, that we're going to call it, did we ask them to say, hey, we can't let you do that, but what is the value of that, and can that be factored into your rate or included in a bonus? We could have done that, right?
We did not ask that.
Okay, so that's kind of where I really wanted to hear the answer to councilmember Soria's question, is why didn't we take that conversation just to the next step, and say, well, guys, look, we can't accept, you know, the...
Eighteen dollars in free mulch.
Yeah, we can't, we can't accept free mulch, but if you want to take out the free mulch, and since you were already going to pay for that in some kind of way, there's a market value, why don't you roll that into your rate, and let's see where we're at, right? We didn't even do that.
Did not do that.
And so, and when you now factor in, you know, I was actually, before my good friend Lee Brand did the Time Value of Money, I was thinking about that very same thing, very same thing too, five hundred thousand dollars today, and you're right, Bruce, they do recover it, but in ten years, so...
Well, you'd have to assume that that five hundred thousand dollars is going to get parked somewhere and earn seven and a half percent over the next ten years.
Well, that's what we assume all the time in this building, we base every budget we do off of assumption someplace, unfortunately.
I can tell you, in the Solid Waste Division, Water Division, we are currently budgeting one percent on pooled resources like that, that's what we're, that's what we're budgeting.
So the bottom line is, the value of five hundred thousand dollars a day, unless we believe that it would have, unless we believe that the dollar would have lost value over ten years, would have been more in ten years than it is today, now, we can debate over whether it's one percent, two percent, three percent, six percent, four percent, but what we can say is that five hundred thousand dollars a day, more than likely, all things being considered, would have been more in value ten years from now, and if we would have included a two hundred fifty thousand dollars on top of that, we're talking about a different contract.
A different number, a different eighteen...
Talking about a different number, we're talking about a different number, right? A number, a different number that's represented to us, a different number that we evaluate when we look at this, and so these are kind of, you know, when I was, even before I received the letter from West Coast, there were things that jumped out to me that, like I saw, even so when we moved to the recyclables, because we haven't talked about a lot about the combined recyclables, maybe people don't have any questions about that, but I do, like, I don't understand when I see, and especially after this discussion, Midvalley Recycling has ten dollars plus a three-dollar bonus, what is that?
So every, all the vendors had to put their number on a bid form and sign the bid form, so that was their official submittal was like that, what Midvalley did was, and there were two parts of the bid form, top part was recyclable materials.
Okay.
Put your bid number in for that, bottom part was green waste recycling, so they filled out, and if you didn't bid the recyclable materials, you put no bid, and if you didn't bid the green waste, you put no bid, but you, so Midvalley filled in both sections, and in those sections, when the green waste came up, they said that they would give us a, they were at nineteen fifty a ton for green waste, and then they would give us a three-dollar per ton credit on recyclable materials, so they were crossing the two commodities, so instead of ten dollars a ton, they'd pay us thirteen dollars a ton if we gave them forty thousand tons of green waste, so they wanted also a part of the green waste as well, and we ran the numbers, and it still was better to go Kachergan at sixteen seventy-five, and Midvalley, just do the ten dollars, they were the low price on that, so we did look at putting forty thousand into Midvalley's contract, what was, what's the value of the three-dollar credit that they were going to give, bonus they were going to give us on top recycle, and they still couldn't close the gap, Kachergan was still the low price.
So...
It was an interesting, I've seen it, that's a strategy that's typically done, was the only one, they were the only vendor that attempted that here.
So are we going to give Midvalley forty thousand dollars?
Forty thousand tons?
Forty thousand tons?
No, no, they're just strictly a co-mingled recycle, that's all.
So then, the three-dollar bonus doesn't apply?
Three, so it's only ten dollars, so their math is based on ten dollars.
Right, so, on this right here, you just explained to me that there is no three-dollar bonus for Midvalley, so if I'm looking at this, again, with not any background on anything, it looks like I have a ten dollar plus a three-dollar bonus, and every, and I have carts who just have seven fifty a ton, and Allenco, which is minus twenty-five a ton, they want to charge us twenty-five dollars?
They want to charge us.
Yeah, I kind of figured that, yeah, so obviously, we're not going to entertain that.
Right.
But, so really, the difference between carts and Midvalley was two dollars and fifty cent a ton.
Two dollars and fifty cents a ton.
Right, but looking at that, just so you know, I would not, that would not have come across to me.
It's not clear.
It's not clear.
Understand.
And also, did anyone else offer any bonuses, so obviously, West Coast offered a bonus that's not represented in here, but Midvalley's bonus is represented in here, and maybe it was because of the way they filled out the sheet, I don't know.
The way they filled out the sheet, yeah.
Did anyone else offer bonuses?
No, those are the two vendors that offered above and beyond the base form that we had.
Okay, so then, why wasn't West Coast's bonuses represented in the summary?
So that was just an error in putting in the five hundred thousand, we weren't going to put in the ten thousand tons, again, because we weren't, we weren't in a position to subsidize the general fund with green waste by allowing an eighteen-dollar a ton price when we had a sixteen seventy-five on the table.
Okay, okay, so for me, certainly, you know, I would want to see the full proposals and kind of evaluate those in light of this, because there's information on here that, you know, can be construed, can be read a little differently, the other question I had, and you kind of touched on it, but I don't want to, you may not know the history of this, Tommy, is, and I can't remember if it was Sal or Esmeralda that asked, why didn't we split the two contracts, so I know, and Bruce, you may want to jump in on this, since you have a lot of history on our solid waste contracts, but in the past, even with our commercial solid waste, we have used more than one vendor, when we're, sometimes when we're close, and it seems like now, evaluating just from the dais and brand-new information coming to me, that West Coast and Kachergan Farms may not in fact be that far off in their pricing, was there ever any idea of splitting these contracts like had been done in the past?
Well, again, the reason we did this in the past, and we did it with the commercial solid waste, was due to logistical costs, and which is why we split community north, well, not north-south, but more east and west, because you didn't want to be in a situation where one part of town was paying a different, different rate, this is a little bit different, because we deliver the product or the material to one site, so there isn't the logistical costs that are being borne in this contract in the past, and so it really comes down to...
But in the past, this contract has been split, right?
Yeah, but what happened as a result of that, the rates were comparable, at least initially, at least initially, so in this case, there's such a spread, as Tommy pointed out, we'd end up having to, I guess, blend the rates between the two, and how much got sent to this side, and which, how much got sent to the other place, which is going to drive their rates, because the amount of product that's being, material that's being processed, which is driving their per-ton cost, it literally comes down to how much is coming in the door, which is what they use to calculate their future costs and what they can bid this at, real quick, because I know this, it appears the council needs more time to deliberate, but city attorney, I asked you a question, and for the record, I want you to clarify, this is an RFP, and council is not taking an action to approve any of the contracts, and it doesn't sound like our recycling contract is at issue, and because we haven't gotten to the point, and council wants to take additional time, and given all the variables that suddenly get thrown out as for consideration, we have the ability as staff to go back and sit down with both the vendors, and basically... and basically ask for, what's your, you know...
Best and final.
Best and final. And we can, and then we can come back in two weeks, and if someone decides that, well, maybe the bonus isn't as good, and I'll put this into my rate, and given that we're not interested, or someone might be interested in giving us free compost, we'll sit down with the two vendors and come back with a number that may even be better than what we have before you today.
Well, I would be happy with that, and in light of that, I'll end my questioning with that. But I would like that done with both contracts. I would like that done with the combined recyclables.
We will provide you, once we get done with that, we'll provide you all the detail that went into staff's recommendation after we conclude that part of the process.
Yeah, and I want that, and so, just so I'm clear on what I'm expecting out of this, is that staff will go back and talk to, have that conversation with our applicants and bring us something back. I think I would feel more satisfied, given what you just said, that effort that effort is made. But in the meantime, I certainly would like to see the proposals, and I may have further questions that I wanna pass on to staff to have you all examine, because we can't, we are precluded from contacting the vendors, we understand that. But I certainly would like to have my questions routed through you to them prior to coming back to council on the 22nd. Okay. I have a couple of council members that have punched up, so...
So, with that, I'm probably gonna forewarn that we will not, we probably will not be back on the 22nd.
I'm fine with that. Okay.
Councilmember Soria.
Just for clarification, I know we've talked about Prop 218. And so, I'd like just some clarification from our attorney, again, regarding these 10,000 yards. I know that we keep talking about Prop 218 and how we're precluded from counting those for purposes or because of the restrictions of Prop 218. So, I just really wanna get more clarification as to that. I'm not sure if I'm really getting if that's what Prop 218 intends, its intent behind it.
Yes, under Prop 218, the city would want to simply choose the best value for the customers to keep the rates low. So, that's the goal. There's nothing specific about what we're talking about here.
So, is it your opinion that in this instance, the 10,000 yards wouldn't, the value of the 10,000 yards shouldn't be precluded from being considered, or some value given to it as part of the contract for Prop 218?
I don't know the value of that. I think you'd wanna look at the whole picture and see if the best value is being provided for the ratepayers.
So, we could potentially consider the 10,000 yards as part of the bigger picture? We're not precluded by Prop 218?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Thank you.
Councilmember Capriola, and what I'll say is really quick, colleagues, we're gonna try to wind it up, since we know we're not voting on this today, but go ahead, Cap.
You're saying that to Mr. Brevity? Anyway, Bruce, you mentioned giving us the details. We're not gonna get four inches of detail, are we? I mean, I don't expect this kind of detail. Maybe, to me, a summary of each of the party's vendors' opinions and conclusions and support thereof would be enough. So, I hope we don't get into the four-inch, we'll never be able to, it's bad enough with the development code, 536 pages, to try to comprehend that thing.
Well, I will leave that up to your discretion. Again, we will present to you all the information that we used thus far. Again, what may happen in the next week is the proposals that we end up finally coming to conclusion as far as the negotiations may be completely different. As I said, you may have one vendor decide to not include a bonus, and another vendor deciding to add, to offer us 10,000, you know, whatever, tons of mulch at X number of dollars. So, we will provide the follow-up material as to how we came to the conclusion and the recommendation. And then, when we present the material to council in open session, we will go over in very fine detail how we reached the conclusion, the recommendation that we did.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Ty.
Thank you.
All right, now, we're going to move on to our 10:30 item, which is the 50th anniversary of the Fresno-Kochi Sister Cities delegation being presented here today. Councilmember Brand and myself are going to come down, and we're gonna have the delegates come forth.
It can be done by consensus unless any council member objects.
Members of the city council and the audience. Members of the city council and the audience, Ken Taniguchi. I'm the co-chair of the Fresno-Kochi Sister City Committee, and we are extremely pleased to be able to introduce to you today the delegation from Kochi, Japan, here in Fresno to celebrate the 50th anniversary of our sister-city relationship.
And hi, my name is Scott. I work for Kochi City, and I'll be doing some translating today. Fresno Gikai no ginen sama, soshite kyou shisaki no minasama konnichiwa. Kyouha Kochi Shi kara kora rete iru, Gyosei houmon dan to shi min houmon dan no futatsu no houmon dan wa irasharu nesga. Korekara aisatsu mo shitaishi, chuzou tei pin wo otashi shitaishita imasu.
There's far too many delegates today, so I've provided a list for the city council of all the delegates here. There's 26 of them from the city of Kochi.
Houmon dan in, zenin shoukaisuru jikan wa chotto tari nai no de, maebo o sakini o wata shi suru koto ni shimashita.
And I have two individuals who stand up here next to me, please. That'd be the city council chair from Kochi, Kunio Takeda, and the co-chair, or pardon me, the chairperson of the Kochi Fresno Sister City, Mr. Akira Fukui.
Korekara o yobi shita i futa ri no kata wa irasharu nesga. Kochi gichou no Takeda gichou to Kochi een ka no kaichou no Fukui san desu.
I'll pass the mic over to Mr. Brand.
Thank you. Kochi yokoso to Fresno. Hope I didn't murder that. And welcome. This is our 50-year anniversary. This goes back to 1965, when Mr. Capriola was still in high school, and I was still in junior high school. And half this council wasn't born yet, but this is a great relationship. I was there last night at the Shinzen Gardens, the beautiful Shinzen Gardens that everybody should see. It's a beautiful new bonsai collection there, that I learned that there are trees there as old as 500 years old. It's really a treasure to this community. And actually, the wooden gates to the structure were a gift from Kochi, Japan.
Minasan kyouha konnichiwa, Fresno e yoku so irashaimashita. Kochi to Fresno no shimaite shi teikai wa gojoushen, gojousen no leki shi ga arimasu ga. Sono dekitta tokiwa, watashi wa chūshaku no seito datta shi, kochira no ginen san mo houkou se da tan desu ga. Hanbun ijon wa tabu umarete nakatta to omimasu ga, toni kakureki shibukai kankei nan desu. Ano kino wa shinzen garden ni iku kikaegarimashita ga, soko wa totemo stekina garden de nihon teiyen ni na tte imasu ga. Fresno no hokori mono, Fresno no akara mono no hitotsu desu. De soko no mon mo Kochi Shi kara no okiri mono rashi desu.
Thank you. And I've been honored to be the ambassador on this deal. I wanna thank Ken Taniguchi and Kunio Takeda from the committee, the Kochi committee. And believe me, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes for this committee. Please give these guys a hand, they've did a great job.
Goko e nan desu ga, watashi wa Fresno Shi gai no Kochi Shi no ambassada to iu ano bu shou ni narimasu. Chotto orei mo arashitaishita imasu ga, Takeda gichou to Fukui kaichou, ato wa Ken Taniguchi kaichou ni mo, honto ni arigatou gozaimasu. Kore ni irete iru douyoku wa totemo okii to omimasu na, no de, kansha shi torimasu.
And our first gift to the Kochi delegation is a proclamation from the city of Fresno, it's a proclamation. And could you read the proclamation, Todd? And we'll...
Whereas the U.S. Sister City program began in 1956, when President Dwight D. Eisenhower proposed a people-to-people citizen diplomacy initiative to promote peace and mutual understanding between citizens of different countries. Whereas sister-city relationship between Fresno and Kochi, Japan was established on February 11, 1965. And whereas, over the years that followed, numerous cultural, educational, and economic exchanges have occurred, resulting in deepening friendships and a greater understanding of our cities and our people. And whereas, Fresno and Kochi are celebrating the 50th anniversary of their long-term partnership. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Fresno would like to officially welcome members of the Kochi delegation and their guests to our city, and extend to them our goodwill and appreciation for 50 years of friendship. Be it further resolved that we do hereby proclaim October 8, 2015 to be Fresno-Kochi Sister City Day in the city of Fresno.
Tsaysho ni o wata shi shita imono no hitotsu nan desu ga. Kore wa Fresno Shi gai kara no sengen o teegami mitaina mono ni narimasu. Ano zenbu o koko de yaku sujikan wa chotto tari nai kamoshire nai nesga. Chotto dake yaku shita version o shoukai shitaishita imasu. Naio wa, ano, ma, kono shimaite shi teikai wa totemo leki shibukai kankei nan desu ga. Ano, yūjō to shinzen houmon dan no houkan nado no kouliu wa, kore ima made kanari hirogatte kimagashita. Ano, korekara mo iliriro yūjō nado wo hiromete iki tai to omimasu. Ano, Kochi to Fresno no aida no kankei wa totemo tai setsu ni shitaishita imasu. Korekara mo yoroshiku onegaishimasu.
Thank you. And we're gonna have a gift exchange. And we're gonna start with the city of Fresno. With my able assistant Ginger, who put all this together. And she's did a lot of work behind the scenes here to make this thing all work. Give Ginger a hand, everybody.
Korekara zōtei pin wo o wata shi shitaishita imasu. Kochira no kata wa douyoku tsukushite irasharu, ginger san to iu kata nan desu ga. Sakki hakushita hito desu kedo, ano, kono omiage wo yoi shite kuremasita.
And council member Brand, let's not forget to thank Judge Akada for all he's done. When I was at the fair yesterday, he was leading the tour and indicating all the history of Fresno and did a great job. So, thank you, Judge.
Ikera saibai kan, saiban kan ni mo orei wo arashitaishita imasu. Honto ni arigatou gozaimasu. Kyouha irasharanai deshoka? Ah, so Ikera saiban kan, Deiru san desne.
Is that the picture there, Ginger? Okay. So, the picture, and that's a picture of city hall, and again, with our best wishes to the Kochi delegation. And now, the Kochi delegation will give a gift to the city of Fresno?
Imo o wata shi shita no wa Fresno no shi chōsha no e nan desu ga. Ano, korekara wa chotto Kochi gawa kara mo zōtei pin wa yoi shite kudasatte iru rashi desu ga. Yoroshiku onegaishimasu.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kunio Takeda, and I am the chairman of the Kochi City Council. Honjitsu wa Oliver L. Mainz Sanse gichou san hajime to suru Fresno no minasan ni, honto ni kono yō ni kangei shite itadakimashite, makoto ni arigatou gozaimasu.
I wish to extend my thanks to the Fresno City Council and everyone else involved, including President Oliver Baynes III for welcoming us to your meeting today. Thank you.
Watashi wa kongai ga hajimete no Fresno houmon de gozaimasu ga. Izeni koko houmon shimashita senpai ginen kara samazama na o hanashi wo kiki. Konkai no houmon wo taihen tanoshimi ni shitorimashita. Soshite kono gai wo mite desne, Kochi to chigaimasu no de taihen odoroite orimasu.
Although this is the first time that I have visited Fresno, I have heard much about it from my fellow council members, and I have been greatly looking forward to this visit. Now that I actually come here and see it for myself, it is very different from Kochi's city council, so I'm very surprised and very interested.
Wawarara desne, ginen ga sanjuyouon manin no naka de sanjuyouon ni gorimasu. Koko wa shi ni to iku to de fijion ni odoroite orimasu. Soshite korekara kansha no koto ba naremasu ga. Fresno no chōho wa iseki hanma de me, areta genya de atta peiyabu wo, senjin no tachi no tayama no douyoku ni yori, miwatasu kagiri no midori no nochi to nari, zenbei demo kushin no nogyōkoku to nari masu. Fresno Shi wa Fresno gun no wundou to shite, mata chōho no nōsanbu no shuka kuchi, kaoko chi to shite, hattenshite kita to okiki shitorimashita. Yonsei mo Fresno gun no keizai, wunka, kouzum no chūshin to shite, taihen katsuroku no aru toshi da to inshou mochimashita.
The Kochi City Council is actually made up of 34 members. So, to see the seven members here, it's very different from the way we do things, and it's very interesting. After that, he wanted to say that the Fresno area was once a land of rough plains, up until a century and a half ago, when the steady efforts of the pioneers and others involved changed it into the nationally prominent kingdom of agriculture with lush greenery that it is today. I've heard that as the center of Fresno County, the city of Fresno is also a hub of manufacturing and transportation, which is also great.
Sa yō naremasu kedo mo, Kochi Shi wa Fresno Shi o hajime, kokunai ga no yon shi to shimaite shi, yūkō to shi teikai wo shitorimashita. Sono naka demo, Fresno Shi to no teikai ga motto mo leki shi ga nagaku, gojoushūnen o mukaeru wo akoto to nari masu. Korekara mo, liōshi no yūkō kankei ga suē nagaku tsuduite iku ko to o kibō shi to orimasu. Thank you very much.
I currently get the impression that the city is full of activity as the economic, cultural, and transportation hub of Fresno County. Finally, Kochi City maintains four sister-city relationships, including Fresno. Out of all of these, Fresno has the longest history, and this year is our 50th anniversary. It is my sincere hope that we can continue this friendly relationship long into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd be remiss if I didn't give credit to Esmeralda, our local artist, who made it. This is an original watercolor she did, so please stand up and give her a hand. Great job.
Kono e wa Imelda Gorik san, Fresno een ka no Imelda Gorik san no original作品 desu no de, chotto orei o arashimasu. Arigatou gozaimasu.
Kore ga desne, nihon kara, shi mieno minasan ni, sensu desu. Pa, Japanese pa.
These are Japanese fans. We have seven of them, one for each of the members of Fresno City Council. And this is for the members of the city council. This is a multi-purpose Japanese traditional cloth called a furushiki.
Furushiki, furushiki.
Say a few words, all right? Okay. Again, I'm proud to be part of a 50-year tradition that's went back, and this fellowship and good relations to the city of Fresno and the city of Kochi. And we're certainly in a world now that has a lot of bad things, and this is a shining light on international relations. And hopefully, I'll be around here in the future to continue this relationship with Kochi. Thank you.
You know, I just wanna say something really briefly, how deeply honored we are to have you all here in our city today and for this trip. I'm familiar with President Johnson's idea with the People-to-People program. My daughter participated in that a few years back, and it's extremely important.
Tsayishou wa anbasara kara no koto ba nan desu ga. Fresno to Kochi Shi wa, ano, kono leki shibukai kankei de yūjō mo fukai shi, kouliu mo fukai shi, totemo subarashi ano, gyoji no hitotsu da to omimasu. Ano, kono yō no naka wa ima warui koto wa ippei okotte orimasu ga. Ma, sono naka de kouyou koku sai kouliu ga dekite honto ni yokatta to omimasu. Sono ato wa, Mainz gichou kara ni mo aisatsu wa arimashita ga. Ano, onaji yō ni kouyou koku sai kouliu wa honto ni ii koto da to shi ji te orimasu. Ano, Johnson daitōriō to iu kata wa, daitōriō wa itan desu ga. Sono Johnson daitōriō wa People2People to iu program wo kakuni...
So I just want you all to know how, how we understand how important these sister city relationships are to really in the effort to have world peace, to understand the differences in cultures, but to also to celebrate the differences in those cultures is truly an honor. So once again, welcome to the city of Fresno.
And last, as our final word, we'd like to ask for a speech from Mr. Akira Fukui, who is the chairman of the Cochise Fresno Sister City Committee in Cochise.
Thank you very much, everyone, for taking time out of your busy schedules. I'm extremely honored that I have the opportunity to speak here today. I'd like to express my gratitude to the kind and open-hearted citizens of Fresno who have played such a crucial role in the building and strengthening of the friendship relation between Fresno City and Cochise City. We are extremely glad that last October, Mr. Dale Iceda, as a representative of Mayor Swerengen and 22 other members of the delegation, were able to visit Cochise to commemorate the 50th anniversary of a sister city affiliation. We are, I'm sorry. And during the delegation staying in Cochise, I had many chances to meet and to become more acquainted with everyone. I recall this moment now, as they have become very fond memories. And on behalf of 340,000 people in Cochise, I would like to express my gratitude to you all for this. Thank you very much again.
Thank you, everybody. And tonight, there'll be a dinner at 5:30 at Pardini's. Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna resume, resume our meeting here. Thank you, thank you. All right, we've had a request by the vice president of city council to have item 2E heard next. So if we have staff here for item 2E?
Kevin was right there a second ago. There he is. Let's do this, Kevin. You're up.
Good morning, council president council. Kevin Michael reports. The West Ramp Project, I think it's 2D. Thank you. A project that we were planning on doing over two fiscal years, and fortunately for us, the FAA has come up with additional funds. And I say that right up front because that's why we have the AAR associated with this item is to grab the additional grant dollars that the FAA has already given to us. So we're ready to go on this project. The project itself is going to replace pavement that's been out at the airport since it was put in in 19, early 1960s. So if you can imagine, it's more than past the time for it to be replaced. It's a great job. We anticipate it's going to be about 200 related construction jobs over the next year. And another aspect of this project is air quality. We are going to be putting in-ground power for the aircraft, which we currently do not have in that area. That allows them to operate the aircraft with the air conditioning and other things without burning a jet fuel on the tarmac. Also putting in charging stations for airline equipment that they use as they are slowly converting to electric vehicles instead of diesel vehicles. So all around, it's a good day for the airport to be able to put a project like this together and come before you. And I'm here for any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Motion to approve, council president.
Well, we gotta go out to the public. So let's take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. Thank you. Now moving on to item 2B. Toward a purchase contract in the amount of $2.298 million to Clean Energy for the purchase of LNG fuel. We have staff for that?
Good morning. I'm Tim Olday with Department of Transportation Fleet Management Division. We are here today to request approval to enter into a five-year requirements contract for the purchase of liquid natural gas. This is the fuel that powers our current refuse truck fleet. Be available for questions.
Right, I'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Do we have, what is the council's pleasure? I'll make a motion that we approve the item. Do we have a second? All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. Item 2C, approve the Fourth Amendment and substantially the form presented to the Measure C Cooperative Agreement with Fresno County Transportation Authority for short-term regional transportation program project N1. Scott?
Good morning, council. Scott Moes, Public Works Department. The item before you recommends approval of transferring $401,000 out of the design budget, I'm sorry, out of the right-of-way budget for the Veterans Boulevard project into the design phase. The purpose of that is to accommodate a bridge redesign over Union Pacific and high-speed rail to accommodate a slight track realignment that staff is very favorable towards. The purpose of this is that high-speed rail has agreed to change the Herndon Avenue crossing from before where they were just going to fly over and leave Herndon at grade. Now the community will benefit by obtaining a grade-separated crossing at Herndon Avenue. The proposal now is to construct an underpass at Herndon. All that's required for the city is a minor change at Veterans Boulevard. We have funding. This involves no new dollars and a very large benefit to the community. Staff would recommend approval, and we're here if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right, Scott. We'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. This is council member Brandaus District.
Thanks for the update, Scott. Motion to approve.
All right, do we have a second? We have a second by council member, council member Brand. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes 7-0. Moving on to item 2D. Actions pertaining to the Santa Fe widening from Palo Alto Avenue to Blythe Avenue. We have staff for that?
Good morning, council president and council members. My name's Randy Bell with the Public Works Department. The item before you today is a Santa Fe widening project between Palo Alto and Blythe Avenues. This project will widen Santa Fe from two lanes to four lanes and will eliminate an existing bottleneck. Additionally, this project will install a water main to close a loop with the water system. This project also has an ad alternate item to install a left turn pocket south of Palo Alto. This turn pocket is a requirement of the adjacent development and is being constructed by the city to avoid cutting into the newly constructed street. The church is paying for the cost of this turn pocket, and no city funds will be used for this. Four bids were received on August 18, 2015, and Emmett's excavation was found to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder with a base bid of $1,698.25 and $32,325 for the ad alternate item. Staff recommends approval of the amendment to the environmental assessment 13-003 and award a construction contract in the amount of $1,38,423.25 for the base bid and ad alternate item to Emmett's excavation of Clovis as the lowest responsive responsible bidder and authorize a public works director or his designated signed contract on behalf of the city. This is my presentation. I'm available for comments or questions.
All right, thank you, staff. We'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any other members of the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. This is council member Brandaus District. All right, I'll. I'll have, I'll make a second, a second of that. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes.
What is, what is our city manager laughing at?
Item passes 7-0.
Correct. However, in this case, we're going with Emmett's.
So I skipped, I forgive me, I skipped our 11:00 AM scheduled communication. We have Sean Sanchez, if you are here. I do apologize that I should have gotten to you right after our Cochise cities. But if you will come on down, state your name and address for the record. And thank you for patiently waiting.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be on the schedule today. I wanted to talk to the council members about what occurred to me on June 24 of this year. I am a business owner of Fresno. I also own commercial property and some residential property. On, I'm a little bit nervous, so please excuse me. On June 24, I have a property on 2065 East Clay, and I've attempted to sell it. If you're familiar with that area, it's kind of a blighted area. It's difficult to sell property unless you intend to give it away almost. There's one or two owners of a majority of boarded-up properties in that area, which I personally feel that they might be contributing to blighting the area to acquire more property at a very discounted price. And I'm not willing to give in and give away my property. So I decided to try to fix up the property. I've had the property secured, boarded up during this time. On June 24, the city code enforcement Evangelina Flores and a fellow officer that I don't know the name of, because I didn't get their name, went to see the adjacent property on 2053 East Clay, and they noticed I have a caretaker on the property. And when they looked over the fence, they told the caretaker, "What are you doing here?" And he says, "I'm looking after the property." They told him to leave the property immediately. And then the caretaker said, "I could give you the owner's phone number. I could have them talk to you immediately if you like." And they said, "No, you need to leave the property." My caretaker called me and said, "You need to do something about it. The city is out here. They're sending out a crew to board up your property, to reboard up my property." And so I tried to call the code enforcement, and they said, "We don't have an open case on your property, therefore there's no one I could talk to you." I said, "Well, you have someone there on my property." They said, "Well, there's nothing I could do, sir." So I proceeded to call my maintenance guy to go out to the property to see what needs to be done to board it up. And he went over to the property. He saw the code enforcement officer that told him that "I've already called out a crew to come out here to board up this property, and the wood that you have is not acceptable. It needs to be 3/4-inch plywood." He said, "Okay, I could go to Home Depot and get that plywood and be right back." He goes, "Well, if you're not back here by the time my guys get here, they're going to do the job." So.
I'm a, you're out of time on this one. Are you almost wrapping it up?
Yes, I'm going to wrap it up. So basically, what they came to originally was for 2053 East Clay. They did nothing to that property. They proceeded to board up my property and send me assessments of $1,500 and $500 for additional times that they've gone out. In the meantime, they've done nothing to the property that they originally went out to. So basically, under the 14th amendment, which I brought up to the hearing officer, that there's equal protection for all citizens, and they said, "You're not a protected class, therefore it doesn't apply."
Let's do this. Let me have you have a seat right here. We'll, we'll, don't leave, but because we'll figure out what the right staff person for you to talk to, okay? If you have a seat right there.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item 3A. Which is a bill just amending Section 6-205 of the Fresno Municipal Code relating to container in view requirements. I'm bringing it in. Greg's gonna do the staff presentation.
Good morning, council. Gregory Barfield, chief of staff, to council member Oliver Baynes. As you know, several years back, the city, former city council decided to put on the record a formal container in view process where our garbage cans had to be either in the side yard or behind a lattice-type fence. When the economic downturn occurred, this council or members of the council at that time decided that there would be an informal request to the city manager to not, one, not enforce that, and two, ultimately, those staff people were either absorbed back into the organization or may have been laid off for a variety of reasons. So on the books, we have this container in view, but we don't enforce it. So this action just merely repeals the container in view. It does require that each resident remove his or her trash can from the public right of way and do the best they can to get it up close to the house, in the backyard, the side yard, or whatever. It also reprioritizes your priorities when it comes to code enforcement issues, because right now, there's no one enforcing this particular order. So questions would be available and happy to answer them for you.
All right, I'll now take this item out to the public. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. And I'll just add really briefly that we kind of wrestled with this for a couple of weeks in the office, but it just was kind of one of those common sense things. We get some complaints about this, about an issue that quite frankly, we don't enforce. So what we wanted to do was just make this consistent with what our practice is. We don't really, we don't, I don't think a lot of people are putting all of their garbage cans in their backyards. We do want them to have it off the street, but not everybody puts it in their backyard, so we were getting some complaints about that. So it was my suggestion that we just really clean this, clean this section up to make it consistent with what we do. Council member Brandau.
So, and Councilman Baynes, I was listening to you intently when council member Soria interrupted, so I didn't catch that last part. But was this a result of some problems or you just kind of want a cleanup policy?
No, we had some, and Greg can probably talk to some of the issues we get in our office, some complaints we get.
But was this a result of some problems, or you just kind of want a cleanup policy?
No, we had some, and Greg can probably talk to some of the issues we get in our office, some complaints we get, but it was kind of started by people calling our office, making complaints on an issue that we don't really even enforce.
Yeah, I'm sure many of your council assistants and chiefs of staffs get these kind of calls. "Hey, my neighbor does not do A, B, and C. Will you come out and cite them?" "Well, we have an informal process not to do that." "Well, isn't it on the books?" "Yes, it is." "You got us." "But we don't have the staff, nor is there the formal process to do it." "This makes it equal." "So now I don't complain on you, Steve, for only bringing it up to the side, but not putting it behind some secure area."
Yeah, that makes sense. Did you make a motion?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second your motion.
All right. Sal.
Greg, I needed some clarification. So what you're asking, Dan, is for the trash bins to be put out of sight?
No, the original container in view required out of sight. And as many of us remember, I think you were chief of staff at that time, we had a lot of seniors and others who were like, "Hey, who's going to buy my lattice?", right? And, you know, we did a lot of creative things at that time to make sure Mrs. Johnson and Mr. Johnson had, you know, at least something to screen the container from. But when we went through the economic downturn and those folks from public utilities stopped the enforcement of that, and then now, code enforcement, their priorities are much more focused on issues in the neighborhoods. This has become something that we just don't enforce. So we want everyone to remove it from the public right of way. That is in the municipal code, it remains in the municipal code.
So in other words, just take it off the street, don't leave it there all week.
Correct.
It's okay to put it on the side of your yard, but do you have to have it behind a screen or anything in this case?
No, no.
Just as long as it's on the side and off the street.
Off the street, right. Off the street. Okay, thanks.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Item passes six zero. Councilmember Olivier absent. I'm now going to go to unscheduled communication. Do we have any members in the public that would like to make any unscheduled communication today? Come on down, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, good morning. Joel Murillo, M-U-R-I-L-L-O, 1095 North Fulton Street, Fresno, California, 93728. On Thursday, Friday, October 29th and 30th, at California State University Fresno, the university and the California Latino Leadership Network will host the California Latino Leadership Education Summit. The summit will begin on Thursday at 4:00 PM at the Satellite Student Union for a presentation for students only by Mr. Jonathan Kozel. It will follow up with a reception at the Table Mountain Rancheria Reading Room with Mr. Jonathan Kozel and Juan Felipe Herrera, professor emeritus at Fresno State University and the United States poet laureate. On Friday morning, President Joseph I. Castro will convene the summit, and there will be scholars, business leaders, policymakers such as yourselves, and others throughout the day. I understand that this will be the first time that the president of California State University Stanislaw, the California State University Fresno, California State University Bakersfield, and the chancellor from UC Merced will all convene in the same room, along with the chancellor Timothy White of the CSU. Scholars and others are invited to figure out how to improve education from pre-K-12 and from community college to postgraduate. It is our intent to fuel the economic engine of the central San Joaquin Valley by making it more likely that a student will go from education into work instead of from education into prison. So you're all invited on Thursday and Friday, October 29th and 30th, and it'll only cost you $150 each. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? I will entertain that.
All right, thank you. Can we have Jose Mendoza? You're here? Come on down.
Thank you, Mr. President and city council members for letting me speak today. I am here on behalf of Fresno City Metta and various community organizers, including Mexican-American Political Association and Mi Familia Vota, on a concern that, of your constituents, and I would like to read part of this message to you. Recently, Donald Trump has gained enormous amounts of publicity for his hateful comments about immigrants, specifically Mexican-American immigrants, women, and Muslims. His outrageous comments not only demonstrate his ignorance about this population, but also expose him as a bully. There are anti-bullying campaigns on every elementary, middle, and high school campus in an effort to combat the bullying endemic in this country. In schools, we teach our children that bullying is unacceptable. However, by not speaking out against this public hate speech, we are condoning the bullying of an entire population by a single ignorant man. In this country that is continuously touting itself as a post-racial and embracing of all people and cultures, his rhetoric personifies a great societal disease of our time, the racism that underlies our society. His statements embody the racist, anti-immigrant, and misogynistic views that still permeate our society. This system that thrives on systemic racism and continuously criminalizes people of color is a breeding ground for the type of bigoted rhetoric that Trump has become notorious for. His hateful speech and outright lies about Mexicans and immigrants are untruths that serve only to create a hyper-suspicious public that feels justified in carrying out hate crimes as we have seen happen in Boston, Massachusetts. Those with similar hateful and racist messages have found a platform in Trump, attending his rallies to also yell hateful anti-Muslim and anti-immigrant slogans, acts which Trump condemns, giving support to further bullying. And so as this organization, we conclude that in order to note that while Trump may be the current poster child for racist rhetoric, ridding our airways of his hate speech and public bullying is not the solution to the underlying issues which plague our society. Trump is the tip of the iceberg, and in taking a public stand against him and those who seek to persecute particular populations of our country is an important first step towards a truly inclusive and United States of America. We urge you to take the first step and follow the example set by our state senate in SR-39, who recently presented a resolution to dump Trump. Do your part to be on the right side of history and move towards a better world where all worlds fit.